Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and call the work session to order. This work session is to discuss the city manager recruitment process. I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to Ron.
Thank you, Council President and Council. Before we get started, I know we're gonna do a formal introduction of our new city recorder tonight at the council meeting, but just so you guys are all aware, this is Julie Fisher. Welcome to the council meeting or the work session, but we'll do a formal introduction at the council meeting, but just so you guys know.
Thank you. Welcome, Julie.
So, work session. Goals of our work session here, gather and input some formalized, informalize the job description and the Lebanon profile for the new city manager, kinda discuss the recruitment process. The goal would be to have this ready for completion by the September meeting to where you can basically form, do it by motion, resolution, however you choose to do it. I think after the last meeting on the, what was it, the 20th or 21st, after we thought about it a little bit more, there, we need to have some clarity with the whole recruitment committee and how that was gonna work. I think there's, Trey, Trey can weigh in on that as we go through it. So, the way I wanted to kinda run this, rather than get into the three options that we've kinda outlaid there, was to go through the job description and the profile. Those are gonna be used no matter what we do, so if we can get those, any changes you've got, these were sent via email probably a week and a half ago. We do have, Council Steinhebel did submit some changes. Those are shown in the blue. And I think we're looking for council feedback, just kinda, are we in the right spot here? Are there things you wanna see, things you wanna remove, so that we can bring this back and have it formally adopted as the job description moving forward for the recruitment process? So with that, job description first, are there any comments on it? Questions, additions, deletions?
Sorry. Real quick, I can walk you through what I suggested for the group to kinda consider. I really wanted to hit home the idea of that this position is also serving the citizens of Lebanon and that we anticipate the city manager to be pretty involved in Lebanon and have a presence, so I see that some of that is in here now. I also requested that we had specific callouts. It's one thing to have budgeting experience, it's another thing to have budgeting experience that's specific to kinda municipalities and/or governments of any sort. That is a different beast than just a business budget, so I really put that, I asked for that to be included. And lastly, I asked that we had the city manager live within, the city limits, within one year of appointment, and I see someone added, or that the relocation assistance was added in there. That was not part of my piece, but I think that's something we can discuss as a group, but I don't know if anybody has any feelings on that or would like to expand any further, but those were the suggestions that I put in there, and I appreciate Angela for, and Ron for both incorporating those.
I understand that the number five, the add there, what I'd be concerned about, to me, the important thing to find here is somebody who is deeply committed to the community, who lives here and is a leader, and is strong at being a leader. And it feels like that particular line is going to rule out some people from even applying to me. That's just how it feels. Because there are people very strong financially, there's people from the financial world who don't have that experience.
Which number five are you referring to?
Governmental accounting standards.
Qualifications.
So, yeah, we're on page two, mandatory qualifications, experience and requirements for GASP and ACFR. I just, I think working for also, I mean, a government agency, I just, I see how important this is. It's much different than a business budget. There are certain standards that we are held to that are much different than just a regular business, so, I mean, if, if everybody isn't feeling strongly about it as I am, that's okay, I'm happy to move it into desirable.
And I'll just be kinda blunt, because that's who I am, that one of the places we fell short with this before is we had somebody who was really good at that kinda stuff at the top, but didn't communicate and relate to the people below them that well. This is something that our finance guy should know, right? This is stuff that other staff should be involved in and be versed in, and the person who's the city manager should be leading them to do that.
I think the person needs to be familiar and have some experience, because governmental budgets and reporting are so different from the privatized side, that at least a familiarity with it would be absolutely appropriate, because you're right, they will lead Brandon and Ron and all the other guys through the budget process, but you gotta understand it and have familiarity with it to be able to lead that.
Well, what if that's the word that we change here? Instead of experience, it's familiarity or something along those lines, because then if it is someone from Lebanon and they, and they're a lifelong learner and they wanna tackle making sure they can figure this out, then I'm all for it.
Yeah, familiarity, or possibly a desire to be familiar with. I just think it needs, a job description, I don't, I don't want a job description to talk the right candidate out of coming here.
I see what, I see what Dave's saying, because the way it's worded almost limits people who are in the government already to, it limits it to people who are already in government positions, or maybe have had a government position in the past, but most likely if you've had a government position in the past, you're probably still in the government.
This is a little splitting hairs, but what if we move it all to desirable and then have the experience in budgeting or something along those lines in five, for the mandatory? Because I do want someone familiar with, I mean, we have, our budget is, is large, and yes, it's the responsibility of our finance director in tandem with the city manager, but because it is in tandem, I think it is important that this person has budgeting experience.
What's the suggestion, Michelle? I was trying.
If we move number five into desirable and have instead like a blanket budget, experience in budgeting or something in, in mandatory.
No, I like that.
Yep.
I agree.
It is desirable.
Good.
Okay.
Michelle, would it be helpful to put the word "some" experience? In other words, we may be asking for a person that has totally qualified and is being paid much more than we can afford. In other words, you know, I've got all this experience, but you're only gonna pay me this amount, and that's, and so they'll stay where they are, rather than come and help us out.
Well, I think the.
The word "some" limits the amount.
Okay. Council, do you have?
I think I like your suggestion, moving number five to desirable, and then adding in the mandatory, what was your, what was your wording?
I think experience in budgeting, experience in, I mean, it needs, we need to convey that they need to know how to, how to budget for our large organization.
Yes.
With hundreds of millions of dollars, so that needs to be made clear.
Yeah.
In there, so.
I like that.
So.
Trying to think on my feet here.
When we're scoring this, though, Angela, basically the mandatory qualifications are, they've gotta have those, right?
Right.
In the scoring, in the scoring stuff, so keep that in mind when you're, when you're doing that, because that's how you're going to vet these applications, so if you, whatever you say in here, I mean, that's, that's how that's gonna get scored out when you look at these mandatory. When you look at the desirable, then those are places where you can go, oh, okay, they've got a little bit, or whatever, so you're probably on the right path, that's what you wanna do there.
So that, that would mean we definitely would wanna put experience in government accounting standards into the desirable as opposed to mandatory, because if it's in the mandatory, then we're, anyone who doesn't, isn't working for the government.
Sure.
Lose 15 points.
And then if it's in the desirable, we get to decide how much experience they actually have and vet that out.
Well, you probably just weigh it more heavily if they actually have it, considering it's in the desirable, right?
I think the "some budgetary experience" in mandatory qualifications is, is good, I just don't know how to word it, that it's not, you just can't say "budgetary experience", I mean, everybody's got budget, we all get a check each month and we budget.
Sure.
But I don't know how to quantify that.
Organizational, organizational budgeting experience, or something along those lines.
Do we wanna set a minimum, minimum dollar amount on that?
No.
Like, okay, I'm just, I'm throwing it out there. We have a large budget, and if someone's coming in and they've ran a $500,000 budget for a local nonprofit, and they're gonna take the reins on our giant budget.
Eighty million dollar budget.
Exactly. It just, I'm asking the questions.
They have a really good job of convincing you that they could do that.
Yeah.
Okay.
I have, I have budgetary experience at $163 million credit union, but you don't want me to do this. So, so, that's what I mean, the wording is kinda tricky on this to me.
Can I comment on one of your other?
Sure.
The, the charter actually requires that the city administrator be a resident within six, or be a resident of the city within six months of hire.
Okay.
It has a caveat of, unless, unless modified by the council, which I think for the last one, we recognized that she wasn't gonna move and she was, it was interim, so it didn't come into play.
Sure.
But for a, we do have the requirement that within six months they become a resident of the city of Lebanon.
Well, goodness. So we don't need, we don't need to have this added in.
I would put the six months because it flags that we're serious, that, I mean, it's already in the charter anyway, I know it's a scoring thing, but I just, I want to flag for the person, you're gonna move here within six months, apparently.
Is that one, I'm just sitting here looking at this too, is that one of those that you want as a scoring criteria, or could you put it up in someplace else that basically says, hey, one of the requirements of this job is that, I mean, because that's a pretty easy one to.
Yeah, that is easy.
To score, I mean.
I'm fine moving it into the essential job functions and responsibilities, but I don't want it as like number 17.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm just thinking, in terms of scoring, if you look at the mandatory stuff.
I see.
That's your, that's your meat and potatoes of what you're doing, so.
I don't know if we'd wanna score on that one, because some people may.
I agree.
Some people may live here, some people may not, but we're just requiring them, if they get the job, to live here.
And it's not unusual, I mean, it's not a strange requirement.
No, it's not.
It was just something I didn't see on the job description, and I wanted to call it out, so if that fits up in the top somewhere, great. You need, do you need direction as to where, or you?
No, I could put it up in like the top five.
Fantastic. Thank you, Angela.
And I also wanna highlight, and under the mandatory, under number three, as we're talking about the budgeting, it does mention the broad knowledge of budgeting there, and it's referring to public administration budgeting, so we could be a little more descriptive around the word "budgeting" there, if that meets, meets your needs. We could add some qualifier there, or do you really feel like there needs to be a separate line item around budgeting?
I would like a separate line item around budgeting, but I will also defer to the rest of the council. I would like to score someone on budgeting and their experience doing so.
Well, I was thinking if we, we still had a five line item that was experience in budgeting specifically, because I was reading three that said, broad knowledge of municipal government organization authority and functions, intergovernmental relationships, principles, practices of public administration, budgeting and management. To have it in line item five, not only singles out the importance of the budgeting part, but also, I think it, it separates it from the government budgeting too, if we just had organizational budgeting or something, large organizational budgeting experience.
That makes sense.
I don't know if large is, if we'd wanna put that in there, we just have to make an emphasis that you need to know how to operate a budget, and then if you tie number three in, it kinda ties it back to the government budgeting.
So you're still okay then with the broad budgeting, or how did we phrase it, experience in organizational budgets? I think that's kinda what we said earlier. Maybe I said.
That would be, that'd be a.
Five.
That'd be a mandatory qualification, number five.
And then we would remove the reference to budgeting in three?
I think we can keep it in three, just because it's specific in three to government, municipal budgeting.
Okay.
I think leave it in there.
Okay.
And it's not saying that, three is not saying that they have done municipal budgeting, but they, they have a knowledge of it.
Correct. Yep. So, is there anything else on these? Oh, knowledge and ability, I guess I did ask for labor, knowledge of principles and practices of effective labor relations, just because we have two pretty large unions. It's a, it's not in the scoring, but is it certainly a desirable, I think, if someone comes along and has that?
Which one are you looking at?
It's towards the end, it's page three.
Page three in the middle.
Knowledge, skills and abilities, 3.5.
I think it's just five.
Oh, five.
Because of the edits.
That's a changed thing.
Yeah.
Is that three and a half?
Michelle, are we, are we leaving number six on the second page?
So, number six, as Trey pointed out, that they are required, the city manager is required to live in the city of Lebanon within six months in our city charter, so Angela was gonna add that towards the top.
The second phrase, about the money.
Oh, the relocation assistance, that's, I think that was something they wanted us to discuss.
Yes.
Yeah.
Is there money in the budget?
God, I mean.
Yes.
The position's technically open, so, yeah.
You could, and I don't know what a standard relocation assistance is, to be honest with you, it's something we could dig into, but I wouldn't think it'd be astronomical.
It depends on the candidate.
Yeah.
And where they're coming from, so.
Where they're coming from.
Yeah, I mean, I've seen it somewhere on $2,500 to $5,000, we're not talking, you know, large amounts of money, but it just, and it also, I've seen it at zero, so it's just a thought to consider.
Well, the hope would be they'd already live here and we wouldn't need that, but I know that's a long shot.
Or in the valley, or in the state, I mean.
I think $5,000 is pretty standard from what I've heard.
Yeah, and there's money there to do that, because the CM position is actually vacant, running vacant right now.
How about if we said up to 5,000?
Up to 5,000?
Sure.
Great.
Sound like a salesman there.
I assume they have to turn in receipts or something. Yeah, okay.
A little more comfortable than that.
Okay, so, I guess, does any?
I'll ask a silly question. One of your acronyms, I don't know what it is.
Which one?
GAAP.
Generally Accepted Accounting Principles.
It's what?
Generally Accepted Accounting Principles.
Is that what that is?
GAAP.
I don't know, I don't know that I put the, I don't remember what acronyms I put in. I know I put in GASP or whatever, but.
Who put it in doubt?
It could be, it could've been me.
That's kinda what all.
Can we spell number two on page three out, please? Thank you.
No acronyms.
I think my comment was like, experience in budgeting specific to governments, and I mentioned one or two, and it might've been this one too, and said, and any others that I might not be aware of.
It's gap, I thought it was, you were talking about your school system and your finger is stuck.
I do not think so.
Store named cap.
Yeah.
Anything else with the job description? We will take and make a final version of this that you will see at the next council meeting based on the comments we've heard here. Okay?
Well, I know I'm not that formal, I just, like I said, my concern is, I would, I, we can get as many applications we want that don't qualify, but I don't wanna miss somebody because we put a roadblock. I think we eliminated some.
I agree.
I think at the next meeting, we have to, we should have a public hearing as well to let the public comment on all of this.
Correct.
Which is one of the requirements for us to be able to then proceed in executive session.
Yes.
As part of the committee.
Okay. So, who you put that in there, Julie, for a public hearing next time? So, job description, anything else, or can we move on to profile?
I think we can move on to profile.
Okay. So this is, this is similar to what Prothman did for us, and it might even be close, there's some changes that need to be made in here. Basically, population is off, just, this was just an example, someplace for you to start. I think it's got quite a bit of good stuff in it, and, but we're looking for a direction from, from you all in terms of what you wanna see there. Because this is basically what our, what our community is, what the profile of Lebanon is, not so much, you know, you get some, your candidate profile with it, and which kinda reflects back to the job description.
What is this, like on, on the web, what is these, these two, what do they look like? How were they found? Is it like on a government job search, and then?
We will go through that.
Two separate links, or there's a link?
No, we will, Angela's gonna pull up what our web portal will be and show you exactly how this would look if, if the recruitment is done, well, I believe, however it's done, unless there's a third party that does it, so.
I think that if this was updated information, it's pretty solid.
Okay.
It kinda tells the story of us.
Other than the population.
Needs to be brought a little current, but.
Yeah, and let us, let us get it current. I didn't have a lot of time to really dig through it, I believe that on the back, probably the wages, I think those are incorrect as well, and we'll go through all the different things on the back page, make sure that they're still.
That is just.
We reiterate on there that experience with Oregon budget law is sought.
Yeah.
So, we're saying Oregon budget law, again.
Where was that?
That's on page two, second to the last bullet.
Yeah.
I think, just making, making sure some of the changes we just made in the job description also match.
Yeah.
So.
And we can, we can put pictures to this.
Yes.
And make it not so bland, but this is just a place to start.
Make sure you get a picture of the quirky turkeys.
Okay.
Because if that brings someone in, I don't know what.
Okay.
Main Street in all its glory lately.
Actually, we're gonna use a picture of the city council, as our, as the profile.
Yeah, that'll work out well. Sheriff's Department might pull from it.
Questions or changes or other comments on the city profile?
I, I would make a suggestion on, under opportunities and challenges, the first bullet point is, the city has floodplain issues, major impact, I would maybe move that to the last or later down in there, so we're not opening with, here's our problems, we'd love it if you were good at this, that you could fix it, it just seems, it seems like not a good opening to opportunities and challenges.
I agree with that.
I agree.
Okay.
We could start with that we have a new water treatment plant, it could surface water rights.
Yeah.
Take that floodplain thing completely out.
Start with, start with the good.
Work your way down, right?
Fade into the negative. Don't bury the lead.
Yeah, and all honesty, I haven't had a chance to really go through this with Angela or any other leadership team, so we'll, we'll update it and get it to where it looks good and get some pictures into it.
Will it be emailed to us, so we can take, or will we see it at the, at the next meeting?
We can email it, the problem is, is if there's changes that need to be made, or somebody has suggested changes, then, I don't know, Trey, what's your thoughts on that?
That was a question.
If we emailed this out to the entire council beforehand to review and make sure.
I think we should just have it, put it out as part of the, as part of the agenda for the next meeting.
Okay, and then.
Already kinda gone through it, I wouldn't wanna see any additional changes that we don't discuss in open meeting.
Yeah. So we could, we'll, we'll keep it as part of the agenda, if there's something you really feel strong about, then we can make the adjustment in that session.
Yeah, I mean, I think as part of the public hearing, we, we will have the opportunity to make adjustments or changes.
Yeah.
Based on public hearing comments as well.
Okay. I think, similar to the job description, I just wanna make sure that it has like the language of, you know, being community, like you added the language of community-focused lens, or someone did, maybe me, I like, I like that, just to continue to flow through this document, is that, I think is something really important for us moving forward.
Okay?
Okay.
All right. Onto the challenge. The recruitment process, so, we've kinda identified three options, there may be more, but three options. The one that was discussed last council meeting was the recruitment committee, then city-led recruitment and external recruitment, so, or an external recruiter. I wanted to start with the recruitment committee, and kinda have Trey weigh in on this, how he sees that would work, and get some feedback on that, so that we can see how that would work for our purposes, and see what direction council wants to go with that. There's a clarity that needs to be had from staff on that in order to move this forward. Go ahead.
Am I on? Well, and, obviously it was more, it's a concept, it was more of a concept, but I mean, what I, how I would envision it is that we have a committee, and I know there was discussion about how many people would be on it, who's gonna be on it, that kinda stuff, which I don't, I don't really have a, I don't really have an opinion on that, however, I would think you don't wanna make it more than six or seven, because then it's impossible to schedule meetings, but, so, it would be, it would necessarily be a government decision-making body, right, so it has to be, it would have to comply with public meeting laws. That being said, so long as we have complied with the public hearing and public comment portions of the process itself, which we'll do at the next meeting, next city council meeting, all of those meetings can be held in executive session. Up, you know, up until we get to a point where it's presented to the council and the people are notified that their names will be part of the public record, obviously it's obvious why we need to keep that confidential, those names confidential, and that process confidential, up until, you know, we get an air down to where people are actually like ready to have their name out there, be interviewed, have meetings with people, the public, with the staff, with the council, all the meet and greet stuff that we, that I think is good, not required, but good. And, but, but that committee would basically, is not limited necessarily to how they, how they get to their recommendations. In other words, I, the scoring and all of that kinda stuff, I mean, ultimately will be a part of the council decision, right, when we get these people? And the recommendations, it's, how the committee gets to the recommendations to the council is less of, was less of my thought process than was a committee that can think outside the box and go try to find applicants, right? What can we do to bring in applicants that aren't, you know, the applicants that aren't on a daily basis looking through the job listings, you know? Somebody that has a great job because they're really good at their job, but maybe if we, somebody could reach out to them and talk them into how great Lebanon is, and then they might end up applying.
Would the committee be dealing just with the resumes, or would they do the interviewing?
Well, I think, I think in the, see, and I don't see the committee being the only ones that can, that can be part of that process. I mean, there is nothing wrong with the committee saying, sending out something to, you know, to counselors, to staff, saying, hey, here's, you know, what we're looking at, anybody that knows anybody, reach out to them and have them send in their resume to the committee, right? So what I'm saying is, is let's not, I don't wanna just turn this over to six people, and the message boards and the job listings that everybody in there, you know, everybody always puts everything out there on, and, you know, legal Oregon cities, all that stuff, which we need to do, don't get me wrong, all that stuff has to be done, but we can also say, and we want, we want personal connections, if we have them, to reach out and bring applicants, potential applicants in that may not otherwise even give it a second thought, or even know that it's, know that it's an open position, right? So let's just, let's, it's more of a collaboration of everybody that's real concerned about and, and, and high on the city, of reaching out and trying to find the best person possible, that person may not be actively looking for a job, right? But the only thing you can do is try to get them put in an application, if they don't put in an application, then, you know, then we're not considering them. But once they get that application in, then we're talking about the system that I think is pretty set, that we have to follow, the questions and all that, all that kinda stuff. So my concept, and the stuff that I think was outside the box from my standpoint, was really urging everybody that has a stake, you know, a stake in, in working with this person, with what they see as the, as the future of Lebanon, or who they see might be was really urging everybody that has a stake, you know, a stake in, in, in working with this person with what they see as the, as the future of Lebanon, who they see might be a good fit of taking, taking that involvement, taking that to heart and saying, okay, what can I do to help find an applicant that may be the right person? And that's kind of outside that committee. I mean, it, it certainly could be the committee members, but it also can be, hey Jake, you know, who, who have you met that? Geez, you know, I've met this person at a conference and they're really good at their job, but why, they're just, they impress the heck out of me. Why can't I reach out to him or her and, and see if they would be interested in trying something new? No guarantees. I can't tell you what's going to happen, but man, if you get it, put in an application.
I guess I'm confused about what the committee would actually be doing.
That was going to be my question.
The committee, once we get the applications. So the committee itself, the official, the official job of the committee will be to screen the applications, to find those that we want to bring back. The council directs them on how many, you know, they think that you should, how many of these applicants should be brought back and narrowed down for the council, for basically for council interviews.
So you're doing interviews?
Yeah, yeah. I don't know if.
Part of the process.
Could be. I mean, that, that hasn't been, you know.
It could be.
Yeah, they, there could be, there could be.
So basically, we don't need a committee upfront because we're going to have public hearings on all of this. Get all the public input, reach out, and then they're going, those people that are interested are going to be submitting resumes. Those will go to Angela. Who will screen them and bring them to the committee for review then? Is that what I'm understanding?
That is, that is generally the, the concept that I haven't completely added, but something similar.
It feels like part of it is to, I don't want to use a fishing thing, but to catch some resumes we're not going to get just by that.
Yeah.
Right? We need.
Yeah.
We need some input from people to not just go through the message boards or the normal channels, but something that's outside the box.
That's what, that's what the, the public comment and public input at the next meeting would be. And we let everybody know, hey, we don't know everybody. If you know someone, send them our way.
We can certainly say that at the next meeting. I mean, the, the part that I was talking about, the public hearing, is the requirements that we have to do to make sure that we can have the, whatever meetings go forward in executive session.
Right.
But it could be more. And I mean, and Angela may have, as far as the committee itself, the requirements and the, there's a lot of more formality related
Sure.
That, that Angela is probably.
But at the front end, we, the, the, the committee would not be the committee yet. That would be at the back end after we get stuff. The front end is the public input, public hearings with, to hear from the public what they're wanting and what they think we should be looking for.
I would agree with that. I mean, and to the extent that we want to form that committee early on and that committee could have, have, okay, how do we want to do this outreach? How do we want to get the most resumes in as we can, that we can? That may be part of the committee assignment. It doesn't necessarily have to be. It could be just the council at the meeting instructing, trying to help with that.
So, so we're, we're kind of running similar paths, but parallel paths here is what I'm hearing. Because all the applications are going to come through city portal, right?
Yes.
So I guess I'm, I'm still, as far as what the committee is going to do in terms of, what, what's your thoughts on this in terms of?
So I don't really see a role for the committee until after information is received. So it sounds to me like it's a case of word of mouth recruiting, which is just another way of recruiting on top of all of the job boards that are out there. So we're going to advertise on all of the main job boards and then individuals who know people or want to reach out to people, everybody is going to filter through our portal. They're going to apply. And then after we get a list of all of the people that have applied, that's where the committee would come in. They would start looking at it. They would maybe go through the sample grading criteria that you see. We can flesh that out a little bit more, make sure the grading criteria are the items that you want to actually grade the candidates are on. And that's something that committee can decide. What do we want to score people on? How do we want to score them? Do we want to give higher points for a bachelor's or higher points for a master's? Do we even want to worry about the education? We want to look at questions that we can ask in the application process, which is that other document I gave you. So through the application process, not only are they submitting a resume and an application, but that application, we can ask any number of questions. And those questions you can use to score. You know, how, what is their drive for applying for this position? And we want to score that question. We want to score that. And the committee can say, here's the answer this candidate gave. How do we score that as a group? We score that with a 20-point score because that's an excellent answer. So that's kind of where I see that committee is they're doing that pre-screening. One of the complications comes in is anybody that's on that committee, we shouldn't really have that same group making a final decision. So that's going to be a big challenge because if those people on that committee, they're doing the pre-screening, they should not also be making a final decision because now they have information and additional details. And they're not going to be able to make an unbiased decision for the actual choosing.
By final decision, you mean the final recommendation, vote to recommend the applicants at the council.
Correct.
So basically you're saying none of the counselors can be on that committee?
I thought we can because ultimately we still hire and fire.
Just said we can't if we're going to make the final decision.
I don't get, I don't get that. I don't understand that.
Right, so the, the committee who's doing all of the pre-screening, who's evaluating how someone scores.
No, I, I understand. I don't agree with that, I guess. I guess I said that wrong. I think we're all stakeholders in this and I see that committee, and maybe I'm reading this wrong, if it's upfront, us getting together and talking about, hey, how are we going to reach out in out of the box ways? Not having the, sure, we're going to listen to the community, but we're supposed to be a little more than, than that. We're supposed to be out there trying to find something that's out of the box. And that's where I'd see it upfront. And I don't, I, if, if, I think if we're voting on it, we have to be part of how they get in front of us. It feels like.
I think the information, I may be wrong, but it seems like the information that if there were a couple counselors on that committee and they had information because they've been, they've been with these candidates from the start, that they were able to pass on to us. I see that as something of value, not something that, I understand the, the idea of bias, but it seems like that's good information for us to know. Like this is why, this is what we like about these six candidates. This guy had this, this lady had this.
Okay, let me ask.
But am I, am I way off base?
I understand. I would agree. Let me ask, what's the HR implications of that? Because we don't want to get in trouble.
I would just recommend that if there is going to be the same group of people out soliciting for people to provide information, that's fine. Anybody can ask anybody to apply.
Right.
But if you're going to formalize a committee, a group of people that are out recruiting to come to the city, that that same group should also not be part of your screening and selection process.
I see, I see what you're saying. You're saying that the recruiters shouldn't be part of the selection.
Right.
That I, I, I can see that.
Can, can the whole council body, so let, let's say they go out and do this committee, can the whole council body review and screen applications and then say, these are the people that we want to interview?
Yeah, absolutely.
And that's, that's how we want to go. I, I think that's probably your best bet here in this case. So if you want to form a committee that goes out and does whatever you think out of the box, whatever that looks like. Yeah.
Yeah.
Then all those applications then come through the HR portal. You guys get an opportunity to review, screen and score, right? And well, the scoring, I mean, that, that's pretty, that can be done in, in our office.
Yeah, yeah, we can pre-score as long as we know the criteria.
Pre-score them and you guys can screen them. Yeah, as long as we know the criteria. And then you would get the opportunity to review those. And if there was something that you saw where you said, hey, this person here, even though they didn't score as well, then maybe you have to interview more than that, just so you pick them up on the scoring piece of it. Is that?
Isn't it just like, I mean, wouldn't it just be like a bid when we get bids, right? We don't necessarily always have to go with the lowest one. I mean, am I wrong?
I get the comparison there.
We, we should have to, yeah. I mean, I, I get what you're going.
We still have discretion.
Yes, we do have some discretion.
I mean, doesn't council still, I mean, I'm not saying to take the person that scores 10 points and, because you love them, but I mean, there's still discretion amongst the body to bring in the dark horse that scored a 62 or something, right? Okay.
I'd just much rather interview 10 people and have eight of them that are no good and find one great one. Than in, in interview four people and find one good one, if that makes any sense.
We can interview an executive session and not have to release names at that point. It's when we have large community interviews. That's generally when the names are released. Am I correct in that?
Yeah.
Okay.
And really, I mean, that's kind of the process that we will need to set up like at the next meeting.
Okay.
The last time we did a real big one, we ended up narrowing it down to, I think we invited three people in. And then did a tour, did the interviews and then a, a public meet and greet over at the library for, for public input.
Remember at that point, we're trying to sell them too.
Yeah.
These people aren't necessarily, they may have applied, they may be following through the process, but they may not be sold that they want the job either.
Well, they did. Those three did.
One of them didn't come.
Yeah, one of them, one of them's in Albany.
What kind of timeline are we looking to actually post this information?
Would say shortly after the next meeting.
Yeah, if, if we can get it all put together and, and know what it looks like, I'm still a little fuzzy on the community piece and, and how we, or the recruitment committee piece and, and how we, the, the portion running through the human resources office is easy. We'll advertise on LOC and the different websites that we do with the web portal, which Angela can show you here in a second. But as far as the committee and the makeup of the committee, is the committee part of, are we going to kind of lump my one and two together and, and, and do it that way? Is that what I'm hearing?
So, I mean, going back to kind of the original concept, and my original concept really was not about a committee that would be making choices. It was about a committee that would be willing to spend some time to bring in maybe other applicants that we wouldn't otherwise get. Now, there are people that are dedicated to doing whatever it is to make sure we get as many applicants as possible. And I agree that they probably shouldn't be able to rule out people or choose people that are, you know, because they're part of the, the recruitment as to who the council should be able to look at. I agree with that. That's fine. And I think it probably is good for the entire council to kind of look at the entire, entire group of applicants. I remember how many we, we got the one time. I don't think it's so, you know, extraordinarily large that it was going to take too much, too awful much, much time. So the, the, the committee that I'm, again, kind of going back to my original thought was it's a committee that will help get the applicants in the door. Is what, is, has always been my kind of thought process. In other words, just, let's just not rely on, just not rely on these, you know, where we're going to post it. And, and the normal League of Oregon Cities and the national, you know, job listings and that kind of thing. And it may be that that's the only place we get any from, and I don't know. But what I, but I, the, the committee that I was thinking originally about, and I'm still thinking of, is, is ways to get more applicants and applicants that may not otherwise apply.
It's more like a recruitment committee.
Right.
Just to, everybody go everywhere, just pull whoever we can.
And it may not be them reaching out to people. It may be, maybe the, the committee reaching out to other members in this community to try to urge them to reach out to people that may, they may know. There's a lot of people that know a lot of people in this city and
Oh, yeah.
You know, if you start, really start thinking about it, maybe there's, there's a lot of people that may have somebody that they may want to reach out to and say, hey, have you ever thought of?
So would it be wise, if we had a recruitment committee, would it be wise to not have city counselors on that if, if city counselors are making the final decision on who they're hiring?
The mayor, absolutely. I feel like the mayor absolutely should be on that committee though, at least, the minimum. You're right.
He's going to be working with them one-on-one anyway.
Exactly.
Well, the mayor, the, what I'm taking from this is the committee isn't actually going to be doing any interviewing. This, this, they're just not, not, not headhunting, that's not the right word, but, but they're, they're getting the fingers out in the community to kind of spread the word, hey, because we will have community members on it and they would, like, as word gets out, we're looking for someone, they don't necessarily have to be a government, lifetime government employee to qualify for this. It's more just to get the word, word of mouth out.
I don't necessarily see a, a problem with having either the mayor or, or counselors on it. Because those people, you know, as counselors and the mayor, you could be doing the exact same thing regardless. I mean, I would think that you guys would.
Right.
If you knew somebody, would be reaching out and trying to get people that you think would be good to apply anyways.
Well, I think that on the committee, what's important isn't if it's one of us or the mayor, it's, we want to get a group of people together who have tendrils. We got, we want people from the chamber or people who can go out and find, that, I guess it's two steps. We have to identify people who can help us with that and then put them on the committee and maybe not worry if, if I, I, I'm, I'm not, I'd be, I could be on that committee. I don't know a ton of people. I don't know how to go out and find them. So I think it's finding the right people to sit there and give us the recommendations.
I, I would agree with that 100%.
But the executive session piece comes into play when you're talking about names and you're talking about, you know, Joe who manages a car dealership or Tom who works at, I don't know.
But I don't even think.
ODOT, I don't know.
I don't think that committee, the committee we're talking about now, I don't think would be a, a committee subject to the public meeting laws.
Okay.
Because they're not, they're not making any decisions.
No, we don't even want them necessarily to give us their, I don't think we want to give them, that's to give them their input on what they think of the person. They just want to, we just want to get them to apply.
So is it even a formal committee then?
Well.
Hurt them to it.
Yeah.
Well, what do you mean by?
It's getting a group.
Like, are we forming it with?
No, I, I don't think it's necessarily, it's not a ad hoc committee. It's, it's just the council saying, hey, let's get a group of concerned people that, you know, have a vested interest to do this job. We don't have to set the meetings. We don't have to schedule anything that, you know, hey, if you're willing to do this, take it seriously. You guys, you know, schedule your own meetings and, and do all this. And to the extent you can get us more applicants, great.
Agreed.
Okay.
So is that a newspaper ad?
Well, I don't think.
Well, just working out.
Better yet, from a, from a council and staff perspective, so we're not formalizing a committee then.
I, I don't think you need to.
So that doesn't, that doesn't happen in any of that. So how does the committee, I'll leave the committee piece alone. You guys can figure out the committee piece. If we're not having to figure out the committee, I'm good. And we can move that direction. If that's, and then.
Well, I think that, I mean, I think we still, the council needs to decide who's on that committee. I don't think that, I mean, I don't think it necessarily.
If the council decides, doesn't that make it an ad hoc committee though?
I don't think it, no. I mean, it may be, it may be an ad hoc committee, but not subject to the public meeting laws.
Okay.
Because they're not going to make a decision. They're not, they're not going to deliberate towards any kind of decision.
Okay.
They're not a, they're not a decision-making body. They're not going to make recommendations to the council, which is a key on, on whether they're subject to public meeting laws.
And we just have to keep the number of counselors on it low enough.
Yeah, you can't have, you can't have a quorum. I agree with that.
Three, two, two and the mayor.
So at the.
This is, this is something we can just turn over to the mayor and say, you're, you're the boss. Find, find, find some, find some people.
You can certainly say, yeah, and here's my recommendation for who I think should be on it.
Yeah, and then he can set up the meetings and.
I think that's a great idea.
I think that's a great idea too.
And so then we don't need to bring anything back as far as.
Just getting back to you, it took me three weeks to remember what I recommended at the last meeting.
Perfect.
I went fishing for two weeks, so I lose a lot.
Clarify things for you.
Yeah, so we're, we're not going to include that in the, what you're going to adopt for process. So what we'll, what we'll do is, is what I've got listed here that you guys don't have in front of you is the city-led recruitment run by our human resources. And Angela can kind of go over what that portal is now and just kind of give you an idea of what that looks like.
And the mayor will learn a valuable lesson of not missing a meeting.
Exactly. Okay, so what I'm going to share with you is a portal that we can customize for our recruitment process, that we can really just make it a lot more inviting. So right now, when people apply at the city, they go to our career center site and it's just a listing of our open positions. So what we can actually do is we can customize this for this specific recruitment. And what we can do is we can, of course, we can add our logo and we can add some images. I have added just a couple of images to show you and I'll put it up on the preview so you can see what it actually looks like. But we can add a couple of images. I've put the city hall and then the picture of, of council on there. So there's a little blurb we can put on there. We're limited to, I think, like 2,000 characters. So it can't be the profile. We couldn't fit onto that, but we can certainly do that. We also, this is where the opening will show. So this is where they will actually click here to go and apply for the, the position. And then there are options to put videos. And I found two old videos, the Why I Love Oregon competition or Lebanon. And then an old one about the friendliness video. And it was, they're actually really nice videos, but they're really outdated. So if there is somebody that knows somebody that could redo some things, that would be great if we could get them in time. Because we do have the opportunity to put, we can put, you know, two or three videos up there. And then here's where we can put additional information. So that's where we can put the profile. the profile. We'll put our benefit summary up there so that they can see what our benefits look like. Anything else we want to put up there, we can certainly add additional documents. So, when a candidate lands on this portal, they'll have all of the information that they need, plus a lot more information. So, a preview of what that looks like when they hit the Career Center for the City Manager Recruitment looks pretty much the same as what you saw, but the pictures will cycle through. We can do up to five pictures, and it will just cycle through while they're on here reading about the city of Lebanon, little blurb. So, we can customize that. We can take it from the profile and just put a section on there. They'll have, obviously, only one job listed, and then they'll have the opportunity to click on the videos if we put any on there and the additional information. So, I don't know if anybody knows anybody that's creative, that wants to snap some pictures or take some videos, but we can certainly dig some stuff up from an archive as far as photos go and put some on here, but.
This is where, Jeremy, you had asked, this is where the profile would be and the job description would all be at this page.
Okay. I can get with Rebecca tomorrow. I know the chamber has a bunch of videos that we've used for tourism and that kind of thing.
That would be perfect.
That were recently done.
I think, though, the most recent one I know is up there, but I could be, no?
Yeah, they did another one for their new Facebook or whatever app.
Well, either ways, if nothing else, they do have a bank of photos that, if they were kind enough, could probably share with us. So, you had some new, you know, content for photos on there.
I'll check with her tomorrow.
Okay, that would be great. Yeah, and then we can update this, and then, once we get all the materials, we'll get them on here.
Well, it looks good.
She's actually in California for the rest of this week, but back next week.
Well, when I say I'm going to check with Rebecca, it means Mary, you know that, right?
Okay, Mary's there.
Yeah, because that's who gets things done.
Do you need us to, Angela, do you need us to go through these briefly before we move on, or?
It would be great if you could provide feedback. So, the list of questions are just some sample questions that we can use in the application process. We can ask as many or as few. Usually, we try to keep it around seven to 10. Otherwise, applicants get a little frustrated for filling out too many questions, especially if they're text body questions and not just yes or no questions. But there would be some great opportunity to, these are great pre-screen questions, so, to ask the questions. So, if there's other questions you'd like, or if you want to remove any of these, we can do that, and we can, we can add that into the application process.
I suppose adding, what were you thinking, is out of the question?
Probably not something.
No, we're not going to add it.
Probably not a good screening? Yeah, okay.
I like these questions. There's quite a few of them, but I also want.
I actually liked them.
Yeah. I like them, too.
I'm not sure it mattered, but the order of operations, I'm not sure that you'd want to ask that. I'm with you. I want to make sure the first kind of question they know is, is about how they feel about the city, but that's just me.
Which question are you referring to?
Just leading out with, what's your highest level of education, if you deserve to, that's all, that's all in the requirements?
Yeah. I don't see why that would need to be in there.
I think I'm splitting hairs probably, but I just wouldn't put them in that order necessarily. They're good questions. They're good questions.
So, you want to take that one out?
Or just move it down?
Yeah, I think, I think the best, first question to lead with is, what inspired do you imply for this position in Lebanon? I mean, that's, that's what.
I think that question leads into the second one about what your field of study, because you can have a bachelor's degree, but not know.
Yeah, that's, those two should be a, a separate one that's down farther in the list, in my opinion.
Yeah.
We just put educational background, and then they?
Oh, yeah, that works.
They enter their master's degree in such and such.
Yeah.
Can we say, what is your relevant education experience or something? Because we say they have to have a bachelor's. Tell me how your bachelor's in theology applies is relevant to this position.
Don't just tell me you have a BS degree, you know?
Or an MRS degree.
Yeah.
Is that, does that clarify things? Does that, does that help you? Okay. And that will collapse that, so it's one question instead of two as well, so. Okay, anything on the questions? I'm trying to move forward. We got six minutes before we're supposed to start our other, so. The score sheet.
So, these are general criteria based on the desired qualifications and the required qualifications for the position. And then I've left room. Obviously, we're going to remove the governmental off of the qualified. So, I'll update this. And then, under the other, just to give us a total of 100, it makes it easier for tabulating, we can add, or it can go above 100. You could go up to 200. You could go to 125 or 130, whatever you'd like. But this is another one of those that I could certainly put some of these questions, these pre-screened questions, and we could score some of them, and that could be something that an actual review committee is looking at, because if the candidates are all answering these questions, you could score one, two, three, all of them. And that goes on the scoring criteria so that we have a, a gauge on how people responded to these questions and how the committee felt that they responded.
Any feedback?
So, you're, you're saying this questionnaire, or this scoring sheet is related to the questionnaire that they'll fill out?
It's right, it's related right now to the job description, the basic, or the minimum qualifications and desired qualifications. But we can add, we don't have to add, but we can add the questions as additional scoring criteria onto this, if you'd like.
So, instead of educational degree, that would be, now be educational experience, right? Like, relevant educational experience or something?
And then you would have to assign a points value based on?
Okay.
Probably still on whether it's bachelor's, master's, but then you could expound on that as far as, you could add a category, you know, is it a relevant, you know, do they have it in basket weaving, or is it in government accounting, right?
Sure.
So, really, the scoring criteria is an opportunity to then rate those candidates, and that's generally how you choose who you interview. I think Trey mentioned, I don't imagine we're going to get 200 candidates, so it may be that you're interviewing everybody who applies, but at least it lets you know how they score. And that's the methodology in recruitment that we need to use to show for fair and unbiased hiring.
Okay.
Is that there is a scoring criteria used.
I would hope the scoring would be more to exclude somebody than to just include them by volume. I mean?
Well, does this, does this meet that desire for you? Like, I don't know.
Well, I just like what you said before, that I, I want the opportunity to, I don't, I don't necessarily want the person who gets this job to have the best score. I want them to be the best person.
Right.
The, some of this is, it's?
Do we need to make other 25 points to balance out the 15 we lost for government accounting?
Well, I think it's budgeting experience now, right?
Remember, the score is not necessarily how you're going to interview. The score is basically how you get them in front of you.
Okay.
So, after that, then the interview process, so it could be your lowest scoring person through your interview process that you interviewed that is your best candidate. So?
Again, some of this is a kind of a compliance?
Yes.
Component to it, too. I get it.
Do we want 10 points for the current resident and 10 points for current, I assume that's like City Manager Association, Oregon City Manager Association?
Yes.
And veteran status, we good with those point values added? Kind of extra gimme? Well, I guess you're not going to get both 10 and 10, I don't think, for being a current resident and a, and a current city manager, as far as I know.
Be a good trick.
The veteran status points, are they mandated?
Yes.
We do have to have them.
Yep.
Well, we can start a little late. Okay, I'm being told we got two minutes, so. Any other thoughts on the scoring sheet? Are we okay with this? Do we need any changes? No?
I think we're good.
Okay, going once, going twice.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll put some stuff together and bring it back and do it probably through motion or resolution at the next council meeting.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and adjourn our work session. We are going to start our city council meeting at 6:05.
Six, 10, please.
6:05.
You better not have a lineup at the bathroom. That's all I can say.
We have, of course, the agenda, board minutes from Parks and Trees and Trails Advisory Committee, Planning Commission, council minutes from both June 28th and the July 20th session, as well as a July 12th session, easement for South Main Road, petition, revocable petition for Airway Road, and a right-of-way dedication for Weldwood Drive. Is there a motion?
Motion for approval.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, next up, I'll turn it over to our interim city manager, Ron, to introduce our new city recorder.
Perfect. Thank you, council president. So, I'd like to introduce to you Julie Fisher. She comes to us from the city of Sweet Home, where she worked the last eight years as the Administrative Services Manager. Prior to that, she was in their Planning and Building Department. Big welcome to you. She's been with us since the 31st of July, and we'll get her broke in, and she's, actually keeps coming back. So, anyway, welcome her and welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Miss, welcome aboard, Julie. Okay, next up, public comments. So, we do have some public comments tonight. Citizens may address council by filling out one of these testimony cards or comment cards and turning them in over to Julie over there. Each citizen is provided up to five minutes to provide comments to council. The council may take an additional two minutes to respond. The city recorder will accept and distribute written comments at a speaker's request. So, I'm going to call up, first, we have Susan Coleman with the city, city of Sweet Home. And then on, the next person to provide comment will be
Good evening, City Council of Lebanon. I am Susan Coleman. I am the mayor of Sweet Home. I'm here to let you know that you cannot take our city manager. I'm just kidding. I just want to say you have excellent employees, three of which were trained in Sweet Home, so we're just grateful that you see the quality that we've been able to train. Julie's excellent employee, so I'm glad you're welcoming her, Brandon as well. I'm also here just to open up lines of communication, to also try and be a good neighbor, and to answer any questions, and maybe clear up any misinformation regarding what is happening in the city of Sweet Home with our homeless. So, we are two different cities, as you all very well know. We have two different populations, so our solutions to them will be different. So, I know you guys have wrestled with what you are going to be doing, and I honor and recognize the work you've put into trying to make those decisions. It's not an easy decision. So, I also know that some people have visited our community and maybe not had great experiences in our community. I know that Councilor Olferz has been to our community on June 28th. He mentioned here, at two hours and six minute mark, that he was approached by six individuals with weapons, machete, hatchets, spears, clubs, and two 380s. So, that's a lot of weapons to be approached with. I would like to encourage anybody, as a great neighbor, you know, as a homeowner, you want to keep your own people safe at your house, but you also want to keep your friends safe, too. So, as a city of Sweet Home, we would like to keep our people safe, but we would also like to keep all of you safe. So, we have this great thing that we have set up. It's called 911. We would love, if you are approached with anybody, with any weapons in our community, to go ahead and give that number a call. Our police are excellent, as, as you know, you have one who was trained there in Sweet Home, excellent, and they will respond well to any concerns you may have. There's also some concerns regarding some Narcon that has been used. It's only been used outside of our fence, FAC, one time. There's There's rumors that go around all the time about what happens at FAC. I would like to welcome any of you to contact me directly, or our city manager. And you can set up a tour, you can come and ask questions, we are welcome, we would welcome them, and in fact, we'd encourage them. You can find out information about what exactly occurs, you can ask any question, and we will answer it candidly. Things that happen in our community, we adjust and adapt as they go. So, on that avenue that FAC is off of right now, no longer is our RVs allowed to park there. We have plans, future plans for that road, which will involve it being a four-to-five-lane road, so RVs are no longer allowed to be parked there. I think when people came to visit, there were RVs there, which since have been towed, so we adapt and adjust as we go. So, the City of Sweet Home, something you may want to know, we have hundreds of acres within the city limits that are actually developable acreage, which means there's a lot of trees, there's a lot of empty space where people can end up camping that we would have to discover. So, we work diligently to make sure we discover where they're at, if there's homeless people there, and direct them to the two locations they're allowed to be at in our community, which is the FAC and behind the police station. Most of the homeless in our community, if you approach them and you say where are you supposed to be, they'll tell you, those are the two locations, so they know. But during the day, they're allowed to wander in our community because we can't stop them from walking the sidewalks. We don't have any tents on our sidewalks, we don't have any tents in our streets. So, just want to clear anything up. I'd welcome a tour, if you guys want to check it out. I have my business cards with me right now, I'm, they have my personal cellphone on there. You're welcome to give it a call anytime and contact us. I also have our chief of police here with me tonight. If you have any questions, please feel free to ask him questions, he deals with them on a regular basis. So, thank you for having me.
Yeah, I would like one of your business cards.
Okay. Mayor Coleman, thank you for coming. I appreciate that you're here tonight. Okay, next up is Kay Cortez, and after Kay will be Harry Brock, Brook, excuse me.
Good evening. I'm here to, first of all, thank Ron Whitlatch and ODOT for working with me. We had two meetings about, on milepost 18, between the Police Department and Senior Center. There's going to be a correction in the fall. We don't know whether there's going to be flashing lights, but there's been a lot of people that have walked across, not including just the handicap, but myself, we've almost gotten hit many times, so I'm very grateful for that. I'm also here to advocate for myself and North Second Street. We have, I'm asking for a four-way stop. We need slower traffic, we have a lot of semi-trucks, and it's a blind traffic racing out of the medical college side of North Second. It is a lot of heavy traffic, not going only to the medical school. We have urgent care, the hospital, the medical facility, and it's, I've got pictures, and also, I'd like to see if we can get semi-trucks from stopping going through our street. They're wrecking our intersection, and Ron Whitlatch is working with me to fix one part of the intersection. It's totally damaged, and I've got pictures of semi-trucks that are going through. It's a blind corner on North Second and Mary Street, and Lieutenant Ryan Podwa is supporting me on a four-way stop. He understands it, he sees it, and I not only walk every morning, but I've also gotten hit several times, right there on the corner of North Second and Mary Street. This guy was coming from Mullins Drive, turning right, he stared right at me. Do you think he bothered to stop? No, I was, was right in front of his car, and he just kept on going. He was heading west. We have semi-trucks that are coming through every day, and they're damaging our road, and it's sad, because the only thing that I see coming off of Tangent, Highway 34, is where they unload at the Police Department. It says trucks unloading, and they have one route, are the semi-trucks allowed to come through there? They should go off of 34, they should go off of Highway 20 and come around, there's a fuel truck that comes through, there's Charlie's Produce that comes through, and Cisco, and they unload food up there at the hotel. And I think that it's, it's dangerous. And now, school's going to be starting, we're talking about a lot of traffic.
You're talking about truck traffic on Second Street? Is that what you're referring to?
The four-way stop right there. We have one stop, but it's a blind corner, and I have pictures, and I also have signatures of all the neighbors from North Second down to Tangent, and here they already have copies of it. That one, a four-way stop, and it also included Highway 34, where we're actually going to get that corrected as well.
Intersection, you're talking about is Second and Mary?
Second and Mary Street, right there on the corner. And I think it was during the pandemic when Ron Whitlatch took a survey, but there was a lot of people not working, a lot of people not driving through there, and he didn't think that it warranted, but it's dangerous. So, how do we stop the semi-trucks from coming through our neighborhood? They're coming off of Tangent, they're coming off of, and they're coming on North Second, and they're coming from Tangent up north.
Actually, I do not know that. I don't know the answer to that, but your two counselors are, if I'm correct on this...
It'll be me.
Okay, it's Ward Two, because it's North Second.
Yeah, I was going to say, didn't we just look at this last year?
Pardon?
Didn't Ron?
So, we've done a four-way stop study. From an engineering perspective, it doesn't mean anything warrants. So, that's not to say that this body can't direct us as staff to put a four-way stop in. You can definitely do that. I just don't have any real justification to do so, other than, you know, what Kay's bringing to you tonight.
So, you're...
Guys did a study?
Yes.
Could you get that back out to us, so we can take a look, and then we can go out and take a look at the intersection?
Absolutely.
Okay.
So, you're going to see some pictures where I'm parked at the stop sign, heading east and turning, going toward Tangent, and if you look to your north, it's a blind corner. There's cars that are parked, some vehicles don't work, and I reported him to get off, and I think it was last spring where I had new curb painting, repainting, for the people not to park, and it's just, it isn't safe. We need to have a safety...
Let us get the information from Ron, and revisit that and come out and take a look at that, would that be okay?
Yeah, and then he's actually going to fix one part of the intersection, where you'll see it's marked.
Yeah.
And I'm grateful for that, but you'll see where it's starting to sink right in the middle, and these trucks aren't helping at any. It's not a truck for help.
It's just really difficult to...
Does that make sense?
Yeah, it is, and I understand your issue with the trucks, but if we put no trucks through, then the garbage truck and everybody, that would include everybody. So, that's where that gets a little tricky, to actually put that and post that that way. I'm not sure how we would do that.
And I'm afraid, like, with these kids that are walking to school and they cross, these people don't stop, and they're not, they're not going slow. These are people, and they're speeding from Tangent to the rebel tracks, straight up to Mullins, back and forth, and they're not going 25.
Well, thank you for coming tonight, ma'am. I know both Councilor Workman and Councilor Olfers will get back to you and connect with you and see what, if, if any, next steps could be taken, but I do appreciate you coming tonight.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And then we will pass these around.
For the safety of our neighborhood.
Absolutely. And I will make sure these get passed around, particularly to them, so they can have access to these.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up is Mr. Harry Brook, and after that, I have Renee Hagan.
Yeah, it's Harry Bork. I've lived here in Lebanon for, like, almost 20 years, seen it grow, it's a really good town. I bought a place, I really like the surroundings. What came to me today is this, and I don't even know if you guys could help, I'm just doing baby stepping this whole thing, but what I found is what, I can't, I've come before you to talk about the profiteering in our senior trailer parks, they're forever home. Why I say that is my friend Peggy Batten, that's here right here, has lived in Cascadia Trailer Park for over 10 years. She, her rent is right now at 808 this month, she only gets $758. Now, when she moved in with her now-deceased husband, it was 435 in 2013, with 7% raise every year. Now, that, that's a lot more than 7% in 10 years. That's almost double what she was paying. She will, she will be homeless along with so many others. Now, we all know what the people see as homelessness. I'm a witness to the trailers moving out of this trailer park, they're, twice a day, or, I mean, twice a week, there's RVs in these trailer parks moving out. They're, they're, they can't afford it, they, it's sad. I know if, if I purchase someplace for my last home, I would hope it would be till the end, and I'm just saying, if we allow this, we are destroying our, our security of ourselves. I mean, I feel like there's just too much profiteering in these trailer parks. I mean, you look at maybe four people having to run this thing, and they're making over $50,000 a month. Now, these people, there are grandparents, are veterans, are, you know, and they planned on, my mother's dealing with this, and McMinnville, it's all over the place, and I realize you guys wouldn't be able to do much, just, I want the word out, there's something has to be done with, with these, overpricing. I mean, they're, they're, they don't have anymore, I mean, their social security for her is so minimum, she can't afford anything, and there's so many people like that, and it's, it's almost a disgrace for them, they, they were independent growing up, you know, I mean, I know my grandpa, if he was alive today, if he had to go through this, it would kill them. I mean, they're moving away before they're kicked out, and if they're homeless, they're wrapped up in everything else, and, and what we're dealing with, with the overpricing of everything, with the, with everything. I mean, we said we were going to help this world 10 years ago. We got more trash, more cars going on, I mean, when are we going to actually wake up to what's actually going on? I don't know. I just, I, I'm just hoping that maybe you guys know some outlet, some way to stop this overpricing. I mean, 10 years, that 7% is not 808 from 735, and this is probably the wrong area, but I'm, I learned student council in Job Corps, I've worked hard in my life, I ended up, you know, I, I just would hate to have this happen to me. I'm an advocate for my friend Peggy, I'm an advocate for whoever. I just, I can't sit back and watch this atrocity happening. I mean, this is our frog in, in our ecosystem. If the frog dies, we're all going to die. It's our canary, if the canary dies in the gold, in the mineshaft, we're next. I mean, it's, it's, what are we going to do? I don't know. I, like, my name's Harry, I, I just, I don't know if you guys got any ideas of what, what to, what to do, and I hope I make somewhat sense. I'm nervous as crazy.
No, don't be nervous, this is, we're easy. So, I appreciate your comments and your passion for this. I, I think you're correct, this is probably not the most applicable body to tackle something like that. I know you talked about a decade, I know those laws limiting rent increases were passed, I want to say maybe two, three years ago now, so, anything prior to that, I mean, that's, that's going to happen, but I know it's supposed to be limited from here on out. Your state representative, based on your address, should be Representative Jamie Kate, and she would be the person that I suggest you, you chat with to tackle, to, to address some of these. I will say, as a City of Lebanon resident, we do have, correct me if I'm wrong, like, programs for people that are invulnerable populations for, like, water.
CFC.
And, no, like, isn't there a discount for some seniors for water, as well as for...
We do have a discount program, yes.
So, we...
The water...
Those are within our, our purview, right, and things that we can do to help senior citizens, and we do that.
Okay.
I don't know about the rent increases, you're probably at the wrong body.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. But thank you again for coming.
Yeah, hey, pleasure, this is a little nerve-wracking, but I'm telling you, I've, I've been talking, trying to talk to the higher-ups, and they're not responding, they're not contacting, they're turning their way, I don't know.
People talking.
I don't know, it's like, everybody's got, their head in the, in the clouds, and we're not really seeing where we're heading.
Well, thank you for your bravery and for coming here tonight.
Thank you.
Of course. Next up is Renee, and after Renee, I have Candace Sturman, excuse me, and Renee, I believe, is in Ward Three.
Yes, my name is Renee Hagan. I live at 311 South Main Road, which is a tragedy area. We have heavy, heavy drug issues there in Gillette Dog Park, at the baseball field, where the kids play baseball. They've got playground equipment there. Those kids, before their games, are walking through their baseball diamond, walking the field, kicking the ground, and the parents and adults are having to go with those pickup sticks, those metal sticks that they have for things that are up high, and they're picking up syringes and drug paraphernalia, that's how bad it is there. There are little toddler playground equipment there. One of the gentlemen in my building had his four-year-old over there, she climbed the slide, got down the slide, and he was going to catch her at the bottom, here was a syringe sitting right at the bottom. Our drug problem, number one, our biggest problem, is all down Weldwood, on the Gillette Dog Park side, we've got poles there, they're pack power poles, the lights, they say they're conserving energy. The whole, all Weldwood, clear down to the New Mobile Home Park, has no lighting. Going down South Main, from our property, right there on the corner of South Main and Weldwood, there is no lighting. That's when the cars punch their speed and go through the dark, you know, heading out somewhere. It's community safety, we've had numerous break-ins to cars, we've had a motorcycle stolen out of a locked gate that had a combination, but someone who had the combination sold it. They stole this man's Suzuki out of the gate. We've had gas siphons, we've had, and it's really their fault for not having lock, if they didn't have a lock gas cap, or they're just popped off with a screwdriver. We were under the impression we're supposed to have a gated community, but Oak Grove condominiums are right next to us, they have a gated community, and they're going through the same thing. We want lights, we're asking for streetlights to be up and down Weldwood, we, we need those turned on. It's darker than, it's just crazy, all the way to Walmart. Through the Mobile Home Park, we have no streetlights down there at all. The people in the, in the Mobile Home Park, they're not too happy either, they just had new street lamps put up, but only one at one end and one at the other end. We've got to have Pacific Power. I spoke with Deila Johnson on Monday, and she was going to get hold of Pack Power, she was going to get hold of Public Works, because those kids deserve to have a place to play. Why should they have to, they should be focused and structured on playing their ballgame, because it's a sport and a positive activity for them to be involved in, and they got to walk their field looking for drug paraphernalia. I think it's insane, it's crazy, we need that ballpark lit up. They've got lit up scoreboards, but we're talking about at night, and those kids could probably play a little later in the evening, if they had the light. Instead, they're playing in 95-degree weather. Let's see, what else? We are at our building, Garden View Apartments, we're all senior citizens, but we are starting our own neighborhood watch, as Oak Grove has, and for crime prevention, we'd love to have video surveillance in that park. I know it's costly, but how much is a child's life worth? You know, if they're walking home with a friend, and they're, they're walking down that long pathway, right between... right between the dog park and Bob Smith Memorial Park, Gillette Park and the, and the baseball field, anything could happen to them, you know? And I think if it was lit up, it'd be a big deterrent, because that is where all the drug dealing, the drug use and so forth takes place. They meet right there in Gillette Dog Park, and we had, last Thursday night, I had my flashlight on my taser, and two of my friends from our building were sitting out there, and I just shined my flashlight right on a person in a car and a guy on a bicycle, and he's well-known in the neighborhood. They finally go their separate ways after their transaction. And the guy in the car comes pulling around, he says, you know, that's not very nice, he says, my friend's gonna go, is about ready to go into a seizure, and you don't shine a light in people's faces. I said, well, what a friend you are. You stopped to buy heroin from the guy on a bicycle, instead of calling nine-one-one for your friend, but then you must also be a user. He didn't like what I had to say, and I didn't care. And I just kept shining the flashlight on him, I said, just move it right on down the road. So, anyway, this is kind of thing, and worse, that we're putting up with. We wanna do a neighborhood watch, crime prevention, we'd like to see video surveillance, go up in that park so we can start identifying license plate numbers and so forth. We're gonna try and take pictures ourselves, but then again, we haven't wanted to have too close a contact with these people, but it's gone beyond that now. Proper lighting near the dog park and the fields, you know, because these kids are gonna end up getting hurt, seriously hurt, and that's not anything for them to, that they should have to think about. All they should be structured on is thinking about their baseball game, you know, not, not going through all that, eh, eh, eh.
Renee, I'm, I live somewhat close to you, I'm your representative for Ward Three. Would you be able to leave your contact information with the city recorder so I can get ahold of you after, after the meeting?
Sure.
Okay.
Also, we would like, and I know, again, here's another expense, but, we did this, I used, I came from Seattle to live here, and when they put up the drug-free zones, which I know we have those, like, at schools, and I think there's one park in town, we need them. That is a huge piece of property, with two baseball fields, toddler playground area, the dog park. If these signs were posted, it doesn't mean they're gonna pay attention to them, and they'll probably spray paint them. But what they eventually did in Seattle, because this is the same thing what was happening with the drug-free zone signs, once it, they were established in the ground, and we know that they're there, if in fact they are repeating their offense, the fines doubled and it turned, and depending on, you know, the severity of the action, it was an automatic one-year in jail. And I think this needs to go forward, because you know they're not gonna pay the fines, they don't want to. I've got names of people who agree with me, Deila Johnson and myself, and several others that are willing to walk around our building and property, but we'd like to have it lit on the street. We're all senior citizens, but we're fed up, we're done, and it isn't even desperation anymore, we're all angry about it. And especially because there's children over there, there's people's children and grandchildren in that park all the time, and I don't think it's fair to them. It's our responsibility as a community and a village to protect those children at all costs, regardless, you know, of what the cost might be to the city, I think their lives are worth a lo, a whole lot more.
Well, thank you for coming this evening. I know Counselor Salvage will connect with you. If you could leave your phone number on this card, I'll hand it over to the clerk so she can collect that. But just a reminder, if you do ever feel unsafe calling nine-one-one, it'd be really important, so we're not trying to do that on our own. They will be there, I'm sure.
They're stretched out there.
Lieutenant Jackson can attest to that.
And nine times out of ten, they can't get to a scene where there's a transaction taking place. It's not the police department's fault, but they are there to help us, and that's what we've been told to do, as soon as we get the information. They don't leave, because we tell them to, and there's gonna be a male and female every single night, or maybe four of us, and we're gonna walk around and just let people know, don't come here, you're not welcome, you're breaking the law, you're doing a drug transaction, or whatever you're doing. No, no more, not in this neighborhood. We're taking it back, and we're gonna save it for the kids.
I'd love to hear that. So, thank you again for coming tonight, and I know Counselor Salvage will connect with you.
Thank you for.
Thank you.
Of course, thank you. Next up, the final comment card I have so far is from Candice Sturman, new FAC Shelter Director.
Hi, I'm Candice, the new FAC Shelter Director.
Sorry, I took a little bit of the wind out of your sails with that, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
So, I've been here at FAC a month now tomorrow. I have all sorts of things I could say, things I could spill out, stats, I have numbers, so if anybody has questions, let me know. Instead of addressing some of the things that I've heard about the shelter, I'm going to say a couple things. We are planning an open house. I would love for everybody to come. We're doing it a little special, just because we wanna make sure that the people we have staying there have privacy and safety, so we will send out a big thing. Everybody's invited, come see who we are, what we do, the difference that we're making. That's, before we say too much about something, you know, come see it, and then let's talk. If you guys think changes or suggestions, I love, love to hear that, doesn't mean I agree with it, but I'll listen. And I wanted to talk about a really cool story. So, one of the big things that I'm working on is community collaboration, right? Because for absolutely everybody that comes to our shelter, there's trauma. I don't care where you come, why you come here, right? Whether it's this seventy-eight-year-old woman that's homeless just 'cause she couldn't afford her home, whether it's the seven veterans we have, whether it's the person with severe mental health issues, right? I don't care why you're here, you're coming because of a traumatic situation. So, we have been working with building our group, I guess, our village, to help these people. We are collaborating with mental health, with drug and alcohol, with Senior and Disability Services. I actually went to a big shelter meeting earlier today for all of the shelters and community agencies in Albany, at the Albany Fire Department, just 'cause it's kind of a good hub for all the shelters between Lynn and Benton Counties to get together. We are just building our rapport with community agencies. Because of this, and I'm super excited, so you'll have to excuse me, we have a veteran that's been with us since beginning. He could not afford his housing, lost his housing, he lost his apartment, was on the streets, was struggling. Thank goodness he got to the shelter, this was before me, that he got there, so I can't take credit for helping him get there. But he got to our shelter, we were able to work with him, we used what I call wraparound services. We have six of us that have had multiple meetings over the last few weeks in regards to this gentleman. Today, he went and signed the keys to his apartment. He was able to, we helped him get furniture, one of my staff, so cute, went and bought him a good, a big old goodie bag, right, with snacks and all these fun little trinkets. That is the kind of thing we do. I recognize that people get frustrated and upset and sometimes scared, Cam, not minimizing the things that people may see out there on the streets, but there's options, there's ways that we as communities can come together and support them. Not saying I want them living, right? Somebody breaking into my house, please don't get me wrong, I'm not minimizing anything the lady just said. There's ways we can all work together to help this. One of, in my opinion, the first step is to remember homelessness and criminal are not always the same. Sometimes those are overlapping, but they are some, they're also different, right? Majority of our people aren't criminals, doesn't mean they're all not, but again, they're not the same, so I think we should start respecting that a little more when speaking on people. But, that's my happy story. I'm not gonna take off all of tonight, I am here, I am more than willing, my cellphone number's on that, that is my personal cellphone. If you wanna hand that out, please do, call, text, all hours of the day and night, my phone is always on. I will give out my email address to, to anybody that needs it, I would love to meet, help, support however I can. I'm new to living in the Lebanon area, been here about a month. I have my own little piece, though, so I'm kinda off, but I see the things going on here, and I wanna help here however I can. So, feel free to reach out to any of us or ask any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Sorry, thank you for coming. And like she said, her number's on the card, so connect with the clerk if you would like to connect with Candice. That's the last comment card I have for the first half of public comments. Just a reminder, there is a second opportunity at the very end of the meeting, so we will, we'll move forward now, onto the agenda. So, first up, we have Annexation A twenty-three dash oh-three, presented by Kelly Hart, Community Development Director, who I believe is online, I hope, I believe so. We'll go ahead and get that started. The public hearing regarding this annexation is now open at six forty-one PM. The city attorney will read the hearing procedures, once he pulls up his document to read the procedures.
He will turn it on here.
He says he will turn it on when he finds, yes, when he has something to say, which is a good, a good reminder, I was supposed to read this at the beginning, but just make sure your mics are on if you're speaking, so we have the audio recorded for minutes.
Tonight's hearing will be pursuant to the quasi-judicial hearing procedures set forth in one ninety-seven dot seven-six-three of Oregon law. Commence of the hearing, all counselors will be asked to announce any ex-party contact or conflicts of interest as usual. If you have any questions about what those are, please let me know. We'll start out with staff report, staff report, we will allow questions of staff by the, by the council. We'll have public testimony in the format that has been provided in the notice of the action, public comment from audience members and from the applicant. Please recognize that all testimony or evidence must be directed towards the criteria that is described in the staff report or other criteria in the comprehensive plan or land use regulations. Note the failure to raise an issue, including a constitutional issue or other issue related to the proposed conditions of approval, if any, accompanied by the statements or evidence sufficient to afford this council and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issues. Will preclude any appeal to the land use board or appeals. An issue which may be basis for an appeal to Luba shall be raised not later than the close of the record or following the evidentiary hearing. Such issues shall be raised and accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford this city council, decision-makers, and the parties an adequate opportunity to respond. Please state your name and address when you testify, go through the procedures with the applicant first, and then anybody, any witnesses in favor, then any opposition, and then rebuttal if necessary. With that, Madam President, you may ask for any conflicts of interest or ex parte contact.
Thank you, City Attorney Kennedy. Do any counselors wish to declare ex-party contact, conflict, or bias? Seeing none, is there anyone in the audience that objects to the notice that was sent in this case or to the jurisdiction of this body to hear the case and consider it? Seeing none, will Community Development Director present the staff report?
Yes, Madam President. Before you tonight is a proposed annexation, a zero-point-six-two acre parcel on the east side of South Falls Street, just south of Turtle Dove Lane. The parcel is designated in the comprehensive plan as residential mixed density, and the proposed initial zoning of the property would also be residential mixed density, and the applicant has accepted the initial zoning. Surrounding the property is a mix of residential properties to the north, east, and south, that's in a mix of county and city jurisdiction, and to the west of it is property that's within the mixed-use comprehensive plan designation, and it's currently an agricultural field. There's utilities and public infrastructure in South Falls Street that would be available for connection, if the applicant so wished to do so upon annexation, and so as it is contiguous with the city boundary to, I believe, the north and the south, and it has utilities available to it in South Falls Street, the property is eligible for annexation. So, the recommendation would be for council to approve the annexation and adopt the initial zoning of residential mixed density. With that, I'll conclude my report and answer any questions.
Thank you, Kelly. Does counsel have any questions for staff? Seeing none. At this time, I'll ask for the applicant's testimony. Do not believe they are here. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of this annexation? Anyone who would like to speak in opposition of this annexation? Seeing none. The public hearing is hereby closed at six forty-five PM. All further discussion will be limited to council and staff at this time. Discussion, counsel?
Read the ordinance.
Okay, will the city attorney please read the ordinance?
Ordinance Bill number two thousand twenty-three dash eleven, ordinance number three zero zero six, a bill for an ordinance annexing and zoning property following consent filed with the city council by landowner in said area pursuant to ORST two-two-two dot one-twenty and ORST two-two-two dot one-seventy, file A twenty-three dash zero-three, Robert Byrd.
Do I have a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Kelly.
Thanks, Kelly.
Okay, moving on to the regular session. Establishing a franchise agreement with Zipley Fiber. Gonna go ahead and have the Finance Director present a report.
Thank you, Madam President. And city counselors, before you is a ordinance for granting a non-exclusive telecommunications franchise to Zipley Fiber. Staff was approached a couple of weeks ago from, by Zipley Fiber, requesting to establish this franchise agreement. A couple of things in the franchise that I will point out, some are common amongst most of our franchise agreements, and some are not. The first thing being that this, this franchise agreement is for a ten-year term, beginning, commencing with the effective date of this ordinance, that's fairly common for most of our stuff currently. One major difference in this agreement is that normally we, the city, can request an audit of any particular franchisee's books to establish that, yes, we're receiving what we're supposed to be receiving annually, and Zipley Fiber, in this case, has requested that that be once every three years. From my standpoint, I think that that will still probably be okay for us, and especially as they're just getting started with this franchise, it's gonna take some time for us to actually start to see some revenue generation as it is. So, I think for this first agreement, certainly, it's, it's probably not going to cause us any angst in any manner. The franchise fee is seven percent of gross revenues, that's in line with our other franchise agreements for telecommunications. And the rest of this is kinda some of the legal language. We have asked for ninety days, we will provide them ninety-day notification if we need them to move any of their equipment, whether that be lines or poles themselves, if they've put any in, or if there's anything in the ground. We're supposed to give them ninety days' notice before relocating, and with a specific sixty-day notice, we can bail out of this franchise agreement with, with Zipley Fiber if it were, for some reason, an issue, or if the city determined that was the necessary course of action. So, for the most part, nothing out of the ordinary, and this is here for your consideration, and I can answer questions if you have them.
Thank you.
Can I ask one question about?
Sure, go ahead.
The, on the inspection, they still have to provide the same reports as anybody else as far as showing the reports of, that justify the franchise fees?
As far as the revenue we receive, yes.
And, and so the only question on the, on the audits is if, and I don't remember the last time we've requested an audit of any franchisee, would be that if we had questions or wanted justification, or had questions about the accuracy of those numbers that they're presenting, right?
Right, yes. Yeah, that would be the only reason we'd use that.
That was the only thing that jumped out at me when I read this, was it once every three years?
Yeah. Yeah, like I said, that piece is certainly not common for most of our franchise agreements. We have in the past had kind of an annual review allowance, in my time here, it's only been a year, so I've never asked for an audit of any so far, doesn't mean it couldn't happen. So, I guess that would be the only consideration that is kinda outside the realm.
Counsel, have questions? Council have questions for staff? Anybody?
I'm going to ask probably what's going to be an ignorant question. Are we, is this a service that the city's using? Are we bringing a franchise in that everybody's using? I don't understand, I don't understand the application.
So the franchise would be for anybody within the city? So they'll provide a specific service to residents, businesses, anybody who's looking to use their services?
So it's just another competing?
Yeah. And I don't know if she is for sure, but we were supposed, Jessica, I think it's Epley, was going to join us. Is Jessica here?
I'm on the line.
Yes, she is. So Jessica Epley with Zipley Fiber is here in case you have any specific questions that you might want to ask of them.
Does this, does this fit a need that we have? Or we have capacity issue that we're not meeting now with the service we have here in town?
I will defer to her, to Jessica on this one actually, because she probably would be able to better answer that.
Jessica, was Zipley, would you like to answer that question? Were you able to hear that from Counselor Workman?
Yes. Yes, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Okay, perfect, thank you so much. Good evening, Council, Jessica Epley, Vice President of Regulatory and External Affairs for Zipley Fiber. Zipley Fiber has been, let me back up. We're a telecommunications company serving roughly 40% of Oregon today. And we have been overlaying our existing copper network with cyber optics. We're expanding our footprint beyond our traditional ILEC footprint. Lebanon is one of the many towns through which we passed today. So this was just an opportunity to bring another broadband provider into the city of Lebanon. We will be providing 10 gigabit symmetrical service to all of your residents and businesses should they so want it. That's the fastest internet in the US right now. So we're very pleased to be a part of the community and look forward to working with you all.
Okay. Any questions for Jessica?
We're Lebanon, not Lebanon.
Thank you, Counselor Workman.
I was waiting for that.
Okay, seeing no more discussion or no further discussion, we'll go ahead and move this forward. Will the city attorney please read the title of the ordinance?
Bill for an ordinance granting non-exclusive telecommunications franchise to Zipley Fiber LLC Company and fixing terms, conditions and compensation of such franchise. Ordinance bill number 2023-15, ordinance number 3010.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And I'm sorry, I got to ask one more question. Well, it was, there was timing issue here. In looking up the, on the Secretary of State's webpage, I don't actually see the name that we are using for purposes of the franchise itself. I see, I see three different limited liability companies. I see Zipley Fiber Northwest LLC, Zipley Fiber of Oregon LLC and Zipley Fiber Pacific LLC. Is there one of those three specific ones that we are dealing with?
So this agreement does say?
One of you finish.
Go ahead, Jessica.
This would be a franchise with the name of Zipley Fiber Pacific. Zipley Fiber Northwest and Zipley Fiber of Oregon are the incumbent carriers that we have operating throughout the state. When we leave that incumbency territory, we must operate according to the Oregon Public Utilities Commission as Zipley Fiber Pacific. So that's what this franchise is for.
Okay, and so we just, we just left it out in the, in the title of the ordinance itself. Because I do see where in the whereas, as you have that, okay.
Brandon, was there anything else we needed? Okay. Okay, we are going to officially move on to the next, next piece on the agenda, which is the presentation of the Lebanon financial audit again by Director Nish.
I am exhilarated to finally present this audit to you for your consideration. I'm going to present a few things, a few important items out of the audit that I believe that you as a council should be aware of. And then we also have Brad, and I'm going to leave it at, I apologize Brad, I'm not going to say your last name because I don't want to butcher it. So he can introduce himself when I kind of pass over to him in case there's other things he'd like to add or in case he'd like to add anything from the auditor's perspective. So a few things contained in this audit. So first of all, net investment in capital assets. So that is our streets, our waterlines, our buildings, our land. All of that increased government-wide. All of you, I think, know that we have been hard at work over many projects, building various things out. So that line increased overall across the organization for the 2022 fiscal year. I do want to highlight real fast, this is for the 2022 fiscal year. So that is the time period that spans June 1st, no, sorry, July 1st of 2021 to June 30th of 2022. So that's the time period we're talking about in this specific document.
Which is why previous councilors are listed on the document.
Correct, yes. So the list of councilors and staff that are listed in this document are based on who was here during that timeframe and who worked on the completion of this document. So another highlight, there is a deficit net position in our governmental funds, primarily due to post-employment benefits. So we're talking PERS in this case, the retirement program for public employees. This does represent a liability for us in the future, certainly as, as we are responsible for kind of paying into that program and ensuring that, or trying to help the state to keep that solvent, which as of the end of this audit, was at about 80% solvency. So there is still a 20% gap in what is existing in the funds today in cash and what will likely need to be paid out over the course of time. There was a significant increase in the unrestricted net position in business-type activities. Business-type activities are water, sewer and storm drainage. And the primary increase of that is due to the receipt of settlement funds that is currently just sitting in the fund balance until we, you all as councilors decide what to do with that pending the outcome of a wastewater master plan or wastewater treatment plan, master plan. For governmental activities specifically, I did want to point out that the police department consumes the largest portion of expenditures in governmental activities. That grew by 3% for the year. Still hasn't hit the 50% mark, so the rest of the organization then makes up the other portions of that. Overall, for the 2022 fiscal year, the general fund added $78,000 to our fund balance. A good thing certainly, in which, you know, revenues are continuing to exceed what we are spending out the door. However, that number is significantly smaller than it has been in years past, indicating that we are on that decline and we've talked about that before, especially when we did budget and such. Outstanding debt at the end of 2022 was $54,853, $853,547. And we will have additional debt coming as we complete the West Side Interceptor project soon-ish, I think. But just to kind of put that into perspective, the debt per capita, so based on our population, that means the debt load that the city has equals about $2,790 per person in city limits. Governmental revenue increased 9.5% for the fiscal year and expenditures decreased 0.2%. And then cash and cash equivalents listed in this document just means the amount of cash that we have in our either bank accounts or with the state's kind of general pool, also known as the local government investment pool. That balance increased 18.3 million. Remember, 12 of that is from the settlement that we received that we are holding on to. So $6.3 million in new cash came in during the course of the year that we got to hold on to. We had a few areas that did over expend their allocated appropriation. So the Community Development Department in the water and wastewater funds exceeded their threshold. The budget in those lines is solely for personnel. So just in that instance, the city did not make a corrective action and did not get a supplemental budget before you to make an amendment there. Public works overspent in wastewater funds, that was across all expenditure types, was not just limited to personnel. Engineering specifically exceeded in the storm drainage fund, again related to personnel costs. And then we, as part of the audit and the adjustments that we made, transfers out in the IT Internal Service Fund exceeded what was appropriated, which was originally zero appropriated because of trying to cover a deficit fund balance from the prior year as we moved some funds around. So those items are, those are violations of ORS, ORS 279. And things that you as the council kind of need to consider and we as staff need to do a better job at making sure that we stay within our legal appropriation limits. The last thing I will highlight in this audit specifically is there was a, we received a relatively unmodified opinion. However, there was a material misstatement presented, which you all have seen in the form of the letter issued by the audit team. But that material misstatement was related to revenue accrual for the West Side Interceptor project. Part of what happens during the course of an audit adjustment period is we make adjustments for revenue that comes in after the close of the fiscal year, after June 30th, but we have to accrue revenue items that are related to the prior year. And what happened here is, is we did that with wastewater, or sorry, West Side Interceptor funds because it was money that the city had deemed had come from expenditures paid before the end of June. However, because this is a, this is coming from a debt item, something that we will eventually have liability for and have to repay, that accrual does not apply. And so we incorrectly made that adjustment. It was something that the audit team caught and is hereby presented as a material misstatement. Our recommendation as staff for ensuring that this does not happen again is to kind of provide enhanced training, enhanced and advanced training through various organizations such as the Government Office, Government Finance Officers Association and some of the GASP trainings that are provided to kind of better equip staff with some of the information. The finance team here is, in small words, relatively new, given that the longest tenured employer in office is four years. So this is a good opportunity for us to kind of enhance our skillsets and make sure that we have all the right information to ensure this does not happen again moving forward. So I would ask that as you're making a motion, if you're making a motion to accept this audit, that that is one of the items too that you are accepting is that our remedy for this material misstatement is additional training. At this point, I will kick it over to Brad to introduce himself and provide any more comments that he may have.
Thank you, Brandon. Yeah, I hope you all can hear me.
We can hear you.
Okay, great. My name's Brad Bingenheimer, partner with the Ken Firm of Cigaliwack. And yeah, once again, we were pleased to serve as the city's auditor for the year into June 30, 2022. Couple comments from me. One of the things I'll maybe expand upon, something that Brandon talked about, which was the city's proportionate share of the net pension liability for PERS and how that impacts your financial statements. And a couple of things to note about that is that liability is measured, first thing, 12 months in arrears essentially. So the number that's appearing in your financial statement is actually measured as of June 30, 2021. Reason for that is that, you know, it takes the actuaries quite some time to finalize all those numbers. And so GASP does allow that in the standard, that the measurement date can be up to 12 months prior to the financial statement date of June 30, 22. And a couple of other things about that. You have to remember, that's a number that's measured as of that point in time. But the two elements of that relate to, one, the total pension liability, which is essentially the actuaries project out into the future, future cash payments to retirees. And then they apply a discount rate and bring that back to a present value computation. And then that number, they compare that to the fair value of all the assets held by PERS as of that point in time, June 30, 2021. Now, that, that total pension liability over time will increase, but does not generally have big fluctuations. However, the value of the assets as of June 30 each year can fluctuate quite significantly from year to year. So that, that number, while it does represent something that we have to, that you need to be aware of because obviously it's going to impact future PERS contribution rates. What's most important to realize is that's going to fluctuate back and forth. And there's really, as, as city council and city management, there's really very little you can do about it. You just have to accept it. And it's one of those things, you know, when will it actually be paid? Some point in the future. It's paid as retirees retire and collect funds. So it's always just going to be there. Just recognize that that fluctuation will occur on a year-to-year basis. Other thing I want to talk about very briefly is, yeah, I realize, you know, it did take quite some time for this audit to be finished. You know, there was, the city had significant turnover during the period of finance personnel. And that does have a tendency sometimes to delay things because the people that were here that did a lot of the work that we're auditing are not here. And so that, you know, creates some time lag. Sometimes there's gaps when you don't have people in place that you need to have. So just things like that, those can, you know, add to the chance that the audit's going to take longer. You know, our plan for the June 30, 2023 year that we have already started with, is that hopefully now that we've had somebody there the whole time, Brandon can't go anywhere essentially. That's going to help expedite this year's audit. So I'd be happy to answer any of the questions you may have of me.
Were you, sorry, were you our auditor last, was your company our auditor last year?
Yes, we were.
Can you give a 2021, 22 comparison, or the previous year comparison? Did we have as many, I'm not going to, issues, non, I don't want to say non-compliance, but just issues as we did this year?
If I was to compare the two years, I would say that, you know, 21 year was probably a little bit better than 22, mainly because you did have consistent staff through that whole period. And so that really helps. You know, whenever you have that turnover and you have new people coming in, you know, they may not be fully aware of everything going on with the city. They're doing their best they can. You know, and of course, we were able to issue it much sooner for the June 30, 21 year than the 22 year. So, you know, like I said, you know, stability in your finance staff really helps expedite the audit process. Once again, probably not something you can do a lot about. You can't, you can't chain people to their desk. But essentially, those are the types of things that will really create an extension of time to complete the audit.
Okay, thank you. Well, I did hear you say that Brandon, Director Nish can't leave. So I think that, that solidifies, I mean, he's not being chained to his desk, but it hopefully will help in the future, so. I don't have any questions. Questions from council?
I guess I have a frame of reference question. I work for a credit union and a federal agency comes and audits us and puts us under a microscope. And on a couple of pages here, and one of them is just for reference, is 164 of your presentation or 286 of our packet. It has a paragraph that I don't really understand and it might just be a CYA thing, for lack of a better term. But it kind of says, "Minimum standard of the audience of Oregon municipal corporations. Non-compliance with these could affect, direct and material effect on determination of financial statements amount. However, providing an opinion on compliance with those provisions was not part of this, was not an objective of the audit." So it feels like, and I just want you to clarify through this for me, that this audit is more to justify what we're doing than to examine it. Is that, is that a, is that a wrong characterization?
I would say that's a wrong characterization. You know, the, the main purpose of our audit is to give an opinion on the financial statements. Oregon law requires us to perform additional procedures over specific Oregon laws and regulations. regulations. And we do perform those procedures, however, that was not the primary focus of our audit effort for compliance with those laws and regulations.
I understand.
So, yeah, so, you know, the difference between us and, of course, a credit union audit, just so you know, our, out of our Denver office, we have a very significant credit union audit practice, and I talk with a partner over there, Sheila, quite regularly on various issues. You know, credit union, they're looking at a very different reason for the audit. Of course, they're also going to be giving an opinion on the financial statements, but a credit union has a lot more complexities in its financial statements due to the very nature of the fact that the, the federal government there is concerned about the security of the deposit, to ensure that, you know, the depositors are, are fully protected. In the case of a financial thing of a city, you know, we're trying to present fairly the results of operations of the city for the public to understand what happened with the city. I'm going to be the first one to admit that, say that the financial statements for governments don't always do a good job of that unless you really dive in and study them. You know, and that particular report that you were quoting, you know, I sat on our State Society's Committee that helped write basically that language of that audit report, so it did comply with our CPA professional standards. So it's kind of like, it's almost like a boilerplate type of language we have to use there. So hope that then answers your question a little bit better.
It does. I'm, I'm just, my concern is, I am from this credit union side, and yes, we're handling people's money and it's complex. I'm equally as concerned as, with how we're handling Lebanon's money. And if there are findings and something that is, this sound wrong, but if there's something that we're doing wrong, or something that's slipping through the cracks that's hurting us, I would hope whoever's auditing us would help us find that. And I'm used to a findings page, and I, God bless you, if all they found in all this was that one little thing, from going through audits, that feels hard to believe to me. So good job if that's what happened.
Hey, any more questions for the auditor or for staff?
I have one for staff, for Brandon. So Brandon, you, you said that some additional training would maybe be the solution to fixing these problems. How, I guess, how, how much value is there to that outside training and that it's specific to what we're actually, your, your accounting team and your finance team is actually doing? Or how much of that could be done in-house, where you guys like, here's the mistakes we made, let's not make these again?
Sure. So I think some of it is going to be, this particular issue is going to be certainly one of those, okay, we've learned from, from the mistake.
Right.
Here's what we clearly should not do again, we know the standard in this case now. I will say that part of the delay in this one too, and this is kind of contributing to your, your question here, is part of the delay for this audit is the city writes the audit itself. These financial statements are written by the city, and I will be 100% honest with this group, that's not something I've ever done before. So this was a huge undertaking for me and a very big learning curve to try to get this finagled correctly. And huge kudos to, to Singer-Lewak and the team as they kind of help review and, and provide some recommendations in that, in that manner. And there are significant changes in this that I think improve this document from prior years. But some of those trainings are going to help enhance my ability to be able to write these in the coming year and to provide kind of greater depth within the finance staff so that if, heaven forbid, I'm not sitting in this chair someday, which is apparently not happening right now because I'm chained to the desk, but heaven forbid if that happens, then there is additional team members that can contribute to this, to this task.
Okay, thank you for that.
I, I do have one, I guess I do have a question. Did we budget for additional training for, for?
We have, we have a training budget annually that, that then provides me with some grace. So I, I have the ability to send, it'll be in my account, the accountant and myself to, and it'll be remote trainings, so it's, it's easier to manage.
That's good to hear too. Okay, I truly don't have any more questions. Does anyone else have questions of staff? No? Okay, well, thank you. I'm not going to attempt your last name, sir, Mr. Brad. For, I, my last name's Steinable, like, come on. Thank you for attending and for giving us more information on the audit and, and for your work on this document, we appreciate it. With that, is there a motion to accept the audit?
I move to accept audit.
I would second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you for all of your work as well.
Thank you all.
He's sticking around because he's needed.
I am sticking around for the next part.
Okay. Uh, next, oh, next is the city manager's report.
No.
Oh, no. Oh, I went too far. Okay. All right, we will recess as the city council and convene as the Lebanon Renewal Agency. Boom. Will the finance director present the report again?
Hello again. I am here once again to present the Lebanon Urban Renewal Agency Financial Report. The Lebanon Urban Renewal Agency is a blended component unit of the city, which by that means all of the, the information contained in this financial report is also contained in the city's overall report, but this is sectioned out specifically for, because this agency, this body, is another governmental agency under, under ORS guidelines. So with that said, this audit here is, or this financial statement is significantly easier, a lot shorter, and part of that is due to the fact that the liability that the agency carries is significantly less. But a few notes for you all, as, as the, the body responsible for our overall finances. The net position within the Urban Renewal Agency is at a deficit, and this is due to the, the long-term debt that the agency carries. So you can see in, in those pages, for example, that, that our assets are down in the probably $2 million range while we're sitting on some significant long-term debt. And that's the point, honestly, of, of a renewal agency. Oftentimes, you will see this because you're taking on debt and then using property tax funds to pay off that debt over time to enhance a blighted area. So that the net position is improving in this report from 2021 to 2022, but is still a deficit at this time. The URA, for short, generated 2.5 million in revenue while we did spend 3 million in overall expenditures, which means you did tap into fund balances across the, the agency to meet requirements. Some of this was on purpose because we were carrying significant fund balances in, in specifically like the Northwest Urban Renewal District. So we are purposely levying lower taxes, a lower rate, in order to kind of spend down the balance of the fund that is over there so that by the time we pay off the debt, we're ready to, we're ready for the next step, whatever that may look like, but so that we're not carrying a huge fund balance at the end of this. Overall, the liabilities include just the long-term debt, as I mentioned before, unlike the city financials, so you don't have any of the post-employment liabilities and the PERS issues in, in this particular financial report. And I am happy to report that the URA specifically did receive an unmodified opinion with no material misstatements. And certainly Brad can speak to, to anything else that he might feel is necessary to add and answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Brandon. Yeah, I really don't have much to add to this. As Brandon said, these numbers are embodied also in the city's overall financial statements. This is just that subpart for the separately legal entity of the Urban Renewal Agency. And we did issue an unmodified opinion, we did not have any instances of non-compliance noted, so I, if you, I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Okay, do we have any questions for the auditor or for Director Nish? Seeing none, we'll move right on to the motion then. Is there a motion to accept the Lebanon Urban Renewal Agency Financial Audit?
I move to accept the audit.
I would second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you both again.
Thank you, council.
Oh, we will recess as the Lebanon Urban Renewal Agency and reconvene as the Lebanon City Council, which just leaves us with our interim city manager's staff report.
Thank you, council president and council. I don't intend to go through the report unless you've got anything specifically that you'd like to discuss. I was going to use this time to go over a couple of other things that aren't on the report, so.
Yeah, I already asked you.
Okay. One of them, probably September, October, we're going to bring our event permit back in for discussion. What that is, there's code, municipal code about the event permit and some of the criteria laid out for it. Just want to bring that back in, review that with the council body, and make sure there's no changes that need to be made. Also, kind of give an update on what, we seem to be having a lot of permit, or events this summer, which is great, but it also has a taxing on all of our different public works operations as well as our police department operations. So just some things you guys need to be aware of, so look for that in September or October. We'll, we'll bring something like that in. Budget discussion. So I don't believe it was at, maybe the July meeting, there was a request to relook at the budget. I need some clarity from this body on what that looks like. What are we, what are we wanting to see from staff? And how soon are we wanting to see that?
Everybody's looking at me. I'll, I'll go first. I would like to see it broken out better. We had all the columns collapsed on this last one, and I talked to Bran, Brandon about it, and he understands what we're looking for, where they expand, where, don't just tell me $8 million to the police department. Tell me where that's going in the police department. Let me, let me take a look at that. Same thing with public works, library, all of that. Some of them are pretty simple because they don't have a lot of people, they don't have a lot of stuff, but some of the larger ones, we need to take a look at stuff. That includes what, what goes on in City Hall. Don't just tell me we're just going to spend $5 million in City Hall. I want to know what that looks like, how that's broken out, so that we have a better handle on where our money's being dedicated to. So if we have a question, we can identify it.
Okay. Brandon, I believe that is, is going to be in the final budget document.
Yes, we will have all of those line items included as part of the, the adopted budget document, which we anticipate next week being available for public consumption, and we'll make sure that certainly you all get a copy as well.
Right, we had talked about that a couple of days ago, and he understood what we were looking for. And he promised we'll have more than four days over a weekend to review it.
So we'll, we'll get that to you. Do you feel a need to bring that back as an agenda item, or would you just like to know when it's out and published?
I'd like to know when it's out and published, and then we can determine, once we look at it, do we need to bring it back as an agenda item? I don't, we don't need to pack it in until we look at it, I don't think.
So if we have a chance to look at it and there's things that don't sit well?
Right.
Then we could bring that back and?
Correct, bring it as an agenda item. And, as, as I understand it, and Brandon can, he schooled me a little bit on, what would that look like if we wanted to do something like that? Do we need to bring the entire budget committee back in, or does the council do that? If we're, let's say we're detracting from the budget, we're eliminating costs, we can do that as a council without having the, the entire budget committee that initially sent it to us reconvened. We do it in public meetings, let the public have their input on it, that sort of thing. So we can make those kind of changes, but the way it was presented last time, we don't even know if we need to make those kind of changes because everything was just flattened out.
Can, can we reappropriate without, if we want to move stuff around? Is that same rule apply as long as we're not adding to it?
I don't think we can do.
You, well, within certain parameters, yes. So ORS 294 does outline a process for a supplemental budget, so you can make some adjustments. What you can't do without some significant work is, is increase expenditures across the, the city.
Why do you think we're looking to do that?
I imagine not, but, so you can move between things in certain areas.
Within one column, if we break it down and we want to rearrange in that column?
Sure, so you can rearrange by fund. By fund is, is the, the easiest thing that you can do, so if you wanted to say, you know, there's, I'm only, I'll use the best examples I can think of that don't hit anything specific. If you wanted to say, there's a lot of money here in non-departmental that we disagree with, and we'd rather you spend it up here in library, you have that authority. That is an easy step for us to make. We present you with a resolution to do a transfer of appropriations and we're good. You can move between funds, so if you were trying to take expenditure authority, existing expenditure authority from the general fund and move it to wastewater, it can be done, but with some significant steps, and it's a lot more difficult, not saying it's impossible. But, so your, your options are, are outlined in, in ORS as to how far you can go with this, but we won't be able to overall add to the bottom line.
Right, and we've done supplemental budgets before, so that's not a huge thing.
So, so with that, are you, so there was talk also about looking at, since we are running a $1.2 million deficit this year, looking at the potential for service reduction. Is that something you, you want staff to run through that exercise, go through that with you? What, what's your preference on this? Because I will tell you, there, there are some things that are going to need to have to happen.
Well, we're 1.2 this fiscal year, and next year we're looking to be another 1.2?
Yes.
And we covered it, remind, we, refresh me, my memory, we covered, recover, we covered it with?
A fund reserve. Yes.
Yes, contingency, thank you.
And then, in reality, we're $2 million because we want to open that jail.
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, we're talking about real money here.
Sure.
So, so with that, I would propose that we probably have our, our management team go through an exercise that would look at different options while being cognizant of what we're actually doing and not, how do I want to word this, tread lightly with this, knowing full well that we need to make some cuts, but there's, we're talking, I mean, the cuts that you're going to be forced into making or we're going to be recommending you make are going to be personnel cuts at this point. There aren't any other places to really dig into a deficit that deep, whether we do it all now, especially if you're looking at a $2 million deficit.
Well, perfect world, of course, we would not cut, we'd gain.
Yeah.
We got to make some more, but how that happens, it's a challenge for all of us, I think, right?
Right. So the, those are, those are the things that if, if, what we don't want to do, even as, as an interim, I don't want to just sit back and wait for next budget year and make this, exacerbate this. So we need to kind of come together with some, I guess, some ideas on how we could, we could do some reduction in service, what that looks like, and also whether this council wants to move forward with some kind of a levy or whatever, whatever you're thinking that you want to use to open the jail. Because to try and cut out and make up 2 million, you're talking, it's very, very substantial.
I understand, even 1.2 is a lot to make up.
Yes.
Especially if it's all people.
Yes.
I would encourage if, if this is something that the management team is going to, to do amongst themselves and then bring that recommendation to us, just as a, having gone through some of these exercises before, is to, to find somebody, maybe to be, perhaps be a facilitator, so no one person winds up being the bad guy for suggesting cuts, and then it would just be a suggestion. I've, I've gone through these exercises before, and I know they are, they're incredibly uncomfortable for everybody because, especially when we're talking people, nobody wants to cut people. So just, just a suggestion, do with that what you will, but it may be helpful for a hard conversation like this.
Yeah, and let, and let me look through that. I mean, we, we've done, we've gone through this before, I've done this several times, we've gone through this process. It's not fun, but I guess when you're running a business, it's not fun sometimes, so we'll look at that and talk about it as a management team and come back with some, some recommendations, probably sooner rather than later, which would be, I'm guessing, for us to put all this together and to come up with a good list of options, we're probably looking to maybe work session October, somewhere in there. So we might be able to slide one in the second September, because there's already a work session on there, but let, let me see what, what the schedules look like, so. Okay, that's what we'll do. And I can- see what the schedules look like. So, okay, that's what we'll do. And I can answer any other questions on this.
Any questions? No? Any items from council?
I want to bring something up. The, I know that pending on the agenda in November is the fluoride conversation. I just want to make perfectly clear that that conversation to me, and I know it won't necessarily play out this way, that conversation to me isn't one side arguing for it and another side arguing against it. My stance on this is this is an item that should be in front of the people to vote for.
What was it?
The fluoride thing.
Oh.
It's going to come up, it's on the agenda, and I know there's personal feelings both ways, and I want you to understand, I don't have one. I know that Michelle, I know you have personal feelings about it.
I do, yes.
But I don't want that to be, for me, arguing for a side. I think that in certain instances, and I think this is a good example, that should be in front of the people. That should, it's easy to put on the ballot. I'm not saying a special election. Next time it comes up for election, put it on the ballot. Simple as that. I've heard enough, I've heard enough about it that I think we deserve that. And I don't have a winning side or a losing side. I really don't. I think we owe it to the people to have them vote on that and other issues, and I'm going to, I'm going to ring that bell on other stuff too, because I ran on it. I believe in it.
So, one question I have for you on that fluoride discussion, I assume that's a discussion that's going to be led by the city council and not staff?
Pardon?
That'll be led by city council and not staff?
I think we would, you know, have some presentation from staff into what the chemical fluoride is and how it's used in the water treatment plant. I think that is fair of staff to give to this body.
Absolutely.
So, we have that understanding.
We can do that, for sure.
But, no, we're not asking for you to tell us what, to make a recommendation.
There's 104 and 100 against.
Sure, absolutely.
No. And I know how it'll probably evolve with public. If we put it out there, it's just going to be on there. I know people are going to come and argue for and against, but that's not what I'm really trying to accomplish here. I just want it to get in front of the people.
Okay.
As I think we kind of all thought it was at one point.
We can, and that was November, right?
Correct.
That's when I inquired, that's what you gave back to me.
Getting my months mixed up here. Okay.
Okay.
I have an item also. Porter Street, near Porter Park, a couple of the properties there, that's in Michelle and I's ward, and it's, it's worse than an eyesore. It's.
It's bad.
It's a criminal enterprise, like, and it's a fire hazard. There's been multiple fires. It's an absolute travesty. That's in our town. And I know it's in Lynn County, and we don't have jurisdiction. I was going to see, I don't know if we need to get this on the agenda or if we can discuss it now, but I would, I would like to throw out the idea of a city council letter to Lynn County, giving them maybe a little suggestion or pressure to do something about it. Up until recently, I didn't realize they could do anything about it legally, but I've found out recently, they do have a legal, they could go through a legal process to, to take that land and then deal with it. So, we don't have, you know, it's horrible.
Maybe I would suggest Carol Gordon is the code enforcement officer for the county, and she's the one doing most.
We've had lots of emails from Carol, both Councilor Salvage and I have, just so you know.
No, yeah, but what I was saying is maybe we, and I know that Sherry Springer has also taken some interest in it. I'm not sure what a letter's going to do, and I'm not opposed to that, but if, maybe if you wanted to invite them to a council meeting to discuss it, that might be helpful. And my guess is they'd probably come, but I don't know for sure.
Yeah, I like that.
I'd certainly support anything we could do back there, because that's a terrible blight to our town.
I've been in a few thoroughbred countries, and that's worse than anything I've ever seen.
I'm happy to reach out to see if they would want to come, or Michelle, Madam President, if you'd like to reach out.
Well, we could leave that for Mayor DeCola when he returns, so I like the, I don't know what people think about this, but it would be great to have a joint meeting with Lynn County Commissioners to actually talk about some of the issues we have in the city, which do include Porter Park, but also include, you know, homeless, the impact of having our jail closed, what that looks like with sheriff's office. It's a host of things that are related to both government bodies, and I would really appreciate that, but I also don't want to put an invitation out there in, when I'm just happening to sit in the hot seat tonight, so. But if that's something we all agree on, maybe, I don't know how that gets going. Is it like, and then it's county administrator, city manager, or how does that go?
And to be honest, there's, you know, there's a lot of things at play with that because the county would certainly like us to take that area over, which we have no desire to do. Look at Ron, Ron just about fell backwards because of the infrastructure costs and all that kind of stuff. So, there's a lot at play in that, but I think a joint meeting, I mean, if you wanted to follow up on that, a joint meeting just to discuss a joint problem, I think would be terrific, because I've been trying to help and deal with that issue. And we've made some progress, like on Mill Street. There is some progress, it's just extremely slow, and a lot of that may be moving over to Porter Street, so.
So, would you rather do a joint meeting, or would you rather me reach out to just one commissioner and the code enforcement officer over there? What's your preference? Because I'll just read out, reach out to county administrator.
Well, ultimately, a joint meeting would be, I mean, like Michelle said, we have a lot of issues in this town that Lynn County and City of Lebanon are, like, were meshed. Like, we have.
Absolutely.
We have interests that align, and I want to establish a really good working relationship with Lynn County.
I agree.
I want our next city manager to have a really good working relationship with Lynn County. So, I don't know if a joint meeting now makes a lot of sense, or if we, if we just get the ball rolling with communications and then plan for a joint meeting when we have a city manager. I really don't know the answer to that.
That's a good no answer.
I think I answered one meeting, doesn't mean you can't have another one.
I think you talked your way into the answer.
I think I answered my answer to the question.
I like that. And then maybe just inviting them for a presentation?
Yeah, that's what I would do, is see if she could come over and give a presentation on what they can and can't do, give the council an opportunity to ask questions about what can be done. They've done it. I mean, we did it there on Mill Street.
Yeah.
So, it can be cleaned up. I don't know property owner status of the properties that you're talking about, so.
That's the biggest problem.
That that comes into play.
Biggest problem is, is that the people died, their ownership is in question, nobody actually owns the property, there's nobody for them to find, there's nobody for them to bring into court. And so, there's, there are avenues that are available to deal with the property as a creditor, because you have to start leaning it and cleaning it up and that kind of stuff. It's, and really, I don't think, I don't think it's the code enforcement officer. I think she would be more than willing to do that kind of stuff. I think it's a discussion at the higher level.
Yes, I would agree with that.
Well, I would assume taking away someone's properties is pretty slow.
Yeah, but nobody owns it right now.
Oh, yeah, that's true. Can't identify the owner. How do you, how do you take it? Okay.
I will reach out to her and see if she would be willing to come and give a presentation, or just come talk to us about, about the, that, that area of blight down there and see what can be done about it.
Okay. Appreciate it.
Get that on a meeting.
Any other items from council? I just want to remind you, I have these photos for both of you up here of the Mary and Second Street, so don't leave without grabbing these. Any comments, would anyone from the public or press like to address the council?
I forgot, I had one more, I had one more tonight.
One moment, please.
I've met with Ron and Kelly regarding the accessory dwelling unit SDC fees for maybe turning your garage into an apartment. And the conclusion was, there are options that we can do. It's just a matter of, as a body, if the city council is wanting to, if that's something we want to take on and look at to rewrite, the original issue that brought this up was a lady who was wanting to convert her garage into a studio apartment, was going to have to pay $10,000 in SDC fees for a 400-square-foot apartment. And I thought that was kind of excessive. So, I've had some meetings, and I guess it's just, as a city council, is that something we want to, we want to work on, or is it something we're happy with?
No, that's something, ADUs are going to become more and more to the forefront. And I think addressing that now would be a good idea as opposed to trying to play catch-up on it.
So, if it is, if it's something we agree we want to work on, we just have to get it scheduled for next month or October? Probably September would be better than October.
Uh, yeah, I'm looking at our agenda. Our agendas are pretty stuff. What's probably going to end up happening is we're going to end up doing two meetings a month.
Okay.
In order to not be here until midnight. So, let me look at that. Accessory dwelling.
SDCs.
Yeah. And we can bring that back on what they're, how they're charged and what they are and what you can do as a body without going back through a methodology, or whether you need to go back through methodology and technically come up with a new methodology for charging. So, we can do that.
Thank you. Okay, we will now move into public comments. Thank you for your patience. Mr. Gunther, would you like to come forward?
Hello, city council. I'm Jeremy Gunther. At this point, you probably have known me. Since we're talking budgets, I actually have a question for staff. Are there legal reasons why we can or can't keep any of the liquid cash in a high-interest checking or savings account? Currently, the reputable one's out there earning around 4%, which isn't great, but it's not nothing either when you're talking some of these dollar amounts. I know savings accounts can only be withdrawn from like four times a month, so there's some juggle work there, but is that an option that we've ever looked at? Is that even something that a government body can legally do?
Are you okay answering that question? I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, so currently, the city does store a large majority of its cash in what's considered, what they call the local government investment pool, and today's earnings on that are 4.8%. So, we do earn a significant amount on what we have on hand. Today, I think there's $48 million in cash in that fund, so the 4.8% earns a significant amount, if you can imagine. What we do hold in a checking account, for example, is just kind of our day-to-day needs. So, as we cut check batches or are spending money, then that's, that money comes out of that directly. But everything we, as much as possible, we leave everything over in that interest-bearing account to earn as much money as possible.
Perfect. That answers my question. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Jeremy.
Ms. Cortez, did you have a final comment for us? Can you? I did, and then I'm going to pass them around, and I did make sure to let the two, your two counselors know to come get these before they leave. So, yes. Okay, you are very welcome. Any final comments from the public or the press? If not, our next scheduled meeting is September 13th with a work session at 5:00 again, and you will have your mayor. We will have our mayor back at that point. Yay. And with all the.